And now call this meeting committee to hold to order at 5:30 PM. Please call the roll.
Ms. Pearson.
Present.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Ms. Mohammed.
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Connor. Ms. Stanford.
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And before we go any further, thank you Connor. Connor Childers works behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast on Channel 20. I'd also like to remind everyone to please hold your questions until after each present, at the end of each presentation. Are there any corrections, changes, or additions to the meeting minutes from October 5? If not, is there a consensus to approve? All in favor? Aye. Or thumb heads? Good. We got it. Thank you. We're going to start off with Mr. Siegel, who leads the Internal External Stakeholders Committee portion of the meeting. Mr. Siegel, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCulloch. Appreciate it. This evening, we will be hearing from Michael Cassidy, Amy Ballinger Cole, and Jeremy Duffy, who represent our interests in Springfield. They will engage us in a workshop, much like we had at the last meeting, around our legislative agenda. And we will also hear from Dr. Tiffany Brunson, whose workshop will center around affinity groups and listening sessions. We really appreciate your insightful feedback during our last workshops and look forward to hearing more discussion tonight. Your comments help determine what information we present in our committee, as well as guiding our work moving forward. For example, I believe we're going to see a very cool calendar or agenda that Connor's going to put up. And here is our agenda for our committee for the coming year. Our goal is to present relevant information that coincides with Exhibit B and contains content that the board members care about. As we continue to gather your feedback, this agenda is subject to change and based on current events and priorities. You'll be able to find this calendar on Board Docs. Now I'll now turn the floor over to Mr. Cassidy and his team. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Cassidy. Thanks for having me today. I have had the pleasure to work with the district for roughly 12 years now. I have with me myself, also my partners, Amy Ballinger Cole and Jeremy Duffy on my team. And we can get right into it, so I hope this works. It's my understanding this is the third workshop on Exhibit B. And obviously, as Chairman Siegel has pointed out, this is the Internal External Stakeholder Committee Governance Meeting. When we were called to present today, our focus is on questions or numbers three and four, right? So overseeing development implication of what we do, legislative and governmental relations policies and strategies, probably based in Springfield and maybe some in DC as well. And we like to recommend the board positions on legislative issues and everything else. What does a lobbyist do? It's a funny question, because my kids ask that question quite often. And sometimes it's not an easy question, and Amy and I were just talking about all the funny things that lobbyists have been called. And unfortunately, at times, it's a business that has a lot of challenges to it. But, you know, in my opinion, lobbyists really do six things, and it's what we do for the district. First, we focus on legislative items. In any given session day, we get about 4,000 bills introduced. We also focus on budget items. So every year, the state of Illinois has to pass a budget that obviously has very profound impacts to what we do. Third, we work on regulatory issues. So Illinois State Board of Education or other departments within the state oftentimes can draft and administer rules that can be often controversial and important. Four, we work on appropriations. So if there's capital for the district, it's our responsibility to go after those things. We'll talk a little bit about some of these pieces. Five, we have to be smart about what's happening in the media. There's a lot of things that can come out in Springfield that we should be aware of and be in front of or in tune on, including also here locally in Rockford. And six, this is a political business. I mean, everyone here is in this stuff, and at times, we find ourselves, unfortunately, crossways with certain things that unfortunately Springfield will just come up with a political battle. I've put a couple of things here, too, that obviously speak to some of those things. So if it's tracking and monitoring those 4,000 bills and amendments and hearings and floor debates, that's our job. You know, in addition to that, while we have an excellent delegation, a bipartisan delegation here from Rockford, we have to develop and build relationships that go beyond Rockford. That's important for us. And those relationships are other legislators throughout the state, chairman of committees, staff at Illinois State Board of Education, or any of the departments that we interact with. In addition to that, too, we also track, which I think is a vital thing, and my colleague Amy Ballinger Cole will speak to, is Illinois School Funding Formula. So that's kind of a rough idea of what lobbyists do. When do we do it? Well, I like to say that our jobs oftentimes are a usual regulator's legislative session, which is going to be typically from February to May. But as we've kind of worked with the board over the years, we realize that it's not that easy. So as of right now, and I put this up on the board, Illinois State Board of Education is B, is working on what their budget will look like before it's even presented next year before the General Assembly. We want to find ways to engage and figure out what's a priority of the Illinois State Board of Education or the governor's office are those that are stakeholders. In addition to that, throughout legislative process, the governor will give his budget address or a state of the state. Our job is to keep you apprised of what those priorities are, whether whoever the governor is, or how the legislature reacts to it. Third, and I think some people like David Siegel probably know this, May is a very busy year for a busy time, because it's basically when they have to pass the budget. I'd like to say at times, it goes till May 31, because that's what the Constitution says, but oftentimes, we go into overtime session. And working with you guys for 12 years, we have seen some interesting legislative and political battles down in Springfield, and I'm sure we'll see more. In addition to that, we've just recently seen special sessions, and we also have a veto session, which we just got out of last week. Other items that can take place outside of this calendar, and I'll make sure I want all board members to know that all are welcome to come to Springfield if you want to make the three and a half hour drive. And I think it's an important process, because you can kind of see how a lot of this stuff is interacted with. We've also seen overtime sessions. We've seen various subject matter hearings. And what I've seen, working with this board, too, is that, as I can, you guys had to go through, is when the pandemic like COVID hits, there are a lot of ways that we can help interact with the governor's office or other regulatory bodies to focus on things that are just as important to this district. So I mentioned the Illinois State Budget, right? That is obviously, first and foremost, I think, one of our biggest priorities, and I know the board will have some additional options or additional things to speak to. But right now, this fiscal year, the state passed a $42 billion operating budget, right, with $100 million surplus, and they actually funded pension payments around $6 billion. Again, I think that was a help with some COVID money, but I think it's an important piece, as we've seen a lot of budget battles down in Springfield take place. And it's one that we have to be very mindful of, because I've also worked with this board where schools weren't going to open on time, because legislature and the governor's office were budgeting, battling it out. This year, we didn't see any tax increases. We did see a referendum on readjusting or modifying our tax structure in the state of Illinois. We saw some closed corporate tax loopholes that, again, helps fund various programs, including schools. The third we'll see, and my colleague Amy, if you want to come up, Amy, will speak a little bit, too, really about specificity, and just a highlight, just a quick highlight of some things that are important to us when it comes to education funding the budget.
Yeah. Amy Ballinger Cole, hello, and thanks for having me today. As many of you may know, the budget in Illinois, as far as education goes, has changed significantly in the last several years. I personally worked on that for at least five years, trying to get our new historic funding formula for the state, which made a very big difference in districts like Rockford. I feel really strongly about that change and that march towards an adequate and equitable education system in the state of Illinois. So when I say we watch for the $350 million increase, we want legislators at a place where they know that that is necessary every single year. They seem to be getting there. We did miss it one year, but that's going much better. And if anyone ever has any questions on budget overall, I'm always here. I think about it a lot anyway, and I'm happy to answer any of those questions, and it's so nice to see you all tonight.
Thanks, Amy. I mentioned another piece that we do for you guys, and that's appropriations. Capital spending for this district is obviously important and vital. And on the slide here, I just made an example that, in this process, oftentimes, our delegation from Rockford can make member initiative or line item requests, as exemplified here, that part of our job is to get that money released to the district. What's not on this slide is that Illinois State Board of Education also has a larger lump sum of capital that we've been waiting to access. But unfortunately, what we've seen is that, as you guys know, capital is attached to revenue. Some of the revenue we have for the school districts is tied to certain funding streams that haven't really come to realization, just like Rockford's casino, obviously, as we know is up and running or about to be seen up and running, just hasn't realized those revenues. So when money comes in, we have the ability to help kind of facilitate and take direction from this board about what's important for capital. So I just want to thank you very high level and appreciate the opportunity. I think we're extension of Rockford Public Schools. We take this board's lead. We want to be effective for this board. We want to assist the staff and administration on this, and ultimately also want to be the best partner we can for the parents and the kids of this district. So at this point, I'm going to keep it as quick and short as possible and turn over to Chairman Siegel, and happy to answer any questions. So thank you. Do you have this? Do you need this for the questions?
No, if you'd just go to the last slide, though. Just go two more. All three questions will be up there. So before we get into our own questions, I would like to take this opportunity to have board members look at these questions and be able to weigh in on them with their own perspectives. And I hope that we have the same sort of engagement that we had at the last committee of the whole meeting. No one likes a dead stage more than I do. So I generally prefer not to kick things off, because you know how I'll just run on, but I'll go ahead and start. I have many hopes to accomplish for Rockford Public Schools, and knowing that in less than a year and a half, this entire board is going to be up, I guess if we're going to come up with any ideas, that we should be moving fairly swiftly to do so. One of the reasons that I typically have supported our contract with and with our lobbyists is there is a lot that is going on, and it's, and while they do a pretty good job of staying on top of it, it's very difficult for me, as a volunteer, to maintain a good control over what's going on. With 4,000 bills hitting their floor each day, up to, you know, you can imagine the difficulty in just trying to find something to latch on to and say, this is important to me. So one of the things that I hope to accomplish with our lobbyists is to get a list of priorities that are going to be important to the district, figure out what is the best way to engage with our legislators, and try and make the most of that engagement. This last year, you know, they were helpful in setting up meetings with each of our local representatives, and I thought those meetings were a great introduction. I'm not sure that we did any earthmoving work with them, but getting acquainted with everybody, I think, is a really great start. One of the things that I would like to see is I hear that once upon a time, we had legislative breakfasts or legislative engagement here locally. And that sounds really practical, because that means not having to go down to Springfield. I also understand that those were very effective only at certain times. As we got really close to legislative session, that a lot of the structure collapsed. So knowing that, it would be interesting to me to be able to set up meetings with our local representation, very local to us, and have the opportunity to discuss those priorities that we set. And I think that we could lean on our lobbyists to help focus what our priorities truly are, when is the best time to meet our representation, and how can we best make those conversations So I'm going to try and pass off with the last part of question three. Any interest in that?
I have a question for clarification. So you're asking, like, our interests in terms of wanting to join you in your efforts of what you're doing with connecting with lobbyists, or just asking for suggestions on how we can do more engagement, or?
That is correct. I mean, I'm looking for your perspective on what are the important things that we need to engage with our representation, and, you know, questions that would pertain to how do we make that engagement work?
If I could just add as well, Mr. Siegel, I think what we're attempting to accomplish is get the board's perspective on the front end of what we want to accomplish in Springfield this year. Some of that could be tied to listening, and having dialogue with legislators to make sure we have good tactics, so that they know what our needs are. You mentioned capital as a specific. And you also mentioned, just in general, how our students can be supported. So when we talk about Springfield, we often talk about things where we're on offense, where we are specifically floating specific ideas that would be good for our district. And sometimes, a lot of the time, we're on what I would call defense, as thousands of bills get filed, many of which are not in our best interest as a school district, making sure we're there to fend those off. So I think what we really want to accomplish, as the clock is winding down here, we have 13 minutes on this topic, I would love to have the board on the front end give us some really direct feedback on what we should accomplish in Springfield this year. We've mentioned capital. We've mentioned evidence-based funding. We've mentioned strategies to engage. Are there some thoughts that, as our legislative, as our locally elected representatives, what are some things you would like us to do in Springfield on your behalf? And how would you like us to engage?
Ms. Pearson.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett, for simplifying the matter. So I frequently hear, excuse me, specifically when we are discussing discipline, that it is tied to legislation. So my question would be, how can we, how can our voice be heard in Springfield where it relates to the, what we have created for our student code of conduct and legislation? Does that make sense? Thank you.
Dr. Jarrett.
Traditionally, we focused on funding for capital and evidence-based funding. Are there other priorities that have emerged for the board, either areas of concern or areas that you would like us to invest our time in as we build our strategy?
I think that we could possibly benefit from touching on equity more on a legislative level. We've already started in our district with taking different steps with trying to achieve that. But I think that, yeah, we can explore that more, just in terms of just making sure that we're meeting these measures, just from the staff's point of view, like just district-wise administration. I think that it would be nice to see equity being pushed more on that level.
I will throw out one. We have expanded the number of occupational pathways that we've engaged with our students and our community partners. If there were ways that the, our legislators could help expand that, I think that would be a benefit to our students.
I have one more.
Yes, Ms. Pearson.
So, and Dr. Jarrett, help me if you, if you will. Because I vaguely remember information in regards to our teachers and tenure versus non-tenure, and the tenure being protected by some laws, if I understood that right. How can we support our non-tenure teachers more where it relates to legislation to increase their chances of achievement as successful teachers? Does that make sense? Thank you.
So just so I'm hearing correctly, like, as we look at our, as we look at retaining teachers that are new to the field, are there legislative priorities or programs that could support efforts to attract, retain, and keep, and help new teachers succeed?
Correct. Exactly. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the input, and thank you very kindly to our legislators for taking the time and effort to be with us this evening. Appreciate it very much. Before we move on to Dr. Brunson's presentation, I would like to introduce a couple of special guests we have here tonight for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, Ms. Isabella Hernandez and Kwaya Jackson. Thank you very much for taking your time to be here tonight. Take it away, Dr. Brunson.
Connor, whenever you're ready. And welcome, young people. That always makes me happy. All right. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit historically of some, about some of the historical things that we've done, and a little bit about what we're going to do going forward, as I am leading our Equity Department, but all of us are leading our Equity efforts. And you all have seen Exhibit B. And one of the things, when I was talking to Mr. Dodson about this, is, you know, where does equity stand? It is interwoven in everything, in all decision-making. And so that's why I'm here, talking about our internal and external stakeholder committee governance. So of course, we're going to see how this is connected to Exhibit B. Specifically, I will be talking about fashioning strategies and plans intended to enhance internal and external communication. The committee, as you know, is responsible for ensuring that the desired image of Rockford Public Schools is regularly updated. I would like to add the, with updated, that means also analyzed. You know, analyzed, interrogated, really thinking about how we can make things better, so updated on a regular basis. Overseeing the development and implementation of strategies for Rockford Public Schools' image building, those are highlighted, because what I'm going to talk about, these two strategies, really have, has to do with the students' experience, and how that experience of our students, experience of our staff, experience of our community, and how that impacts the, our image building, right? It's based on the experiences. Marketing and public relations efforts, and for maintaining close, positive relationships with key external stakeholders. This is a statement that my department, we have been working on, and this is really one, our young people being here, it really speaks to how important this is. So in RPS, we must empower and position students as storytellers, leaders, co-creators, organizers, and partners who advocate for student-driven solutions to educational inequities. Notice, I did not say we must give them their voice, because they have a voice. Our responsibility is to position them in spaces where we are here to listen deeply and to be in community with them. What are they experts at? If you're a five-year-old, you're an expert at being a five-year-old, right? Your experience as a five-year-old in RPS. If you are a teenager and you are, you are attending Auburn, or Guilford, or Jefferson, you know what it's like to be a 15-year-old experiencing those schools, right? So it's really important that we understand what do we mean by student voice. Listening sessions. Last year, the district engaged in listening sessions, and that included speaking with students and speaking with teachers. We're extending that, of course, more with our parents and our community engagement, and continuing our listening sessions with our students. They are powerful feedback gathering techniques, and provides systematic methods to gather feedback from stakeholders to drive decision-making. Part of really working to engage in complex systems change has a lot to do with making sense of data, making sense of information that we are gathering, and what do we do with that information? That's the part. A lot of times, we engage in gathering feedback, but then we don't use that to then make the right decisions. And so that is the really, really, that's the most important thing, that listening deeply, listening with intent, but then also using that information to make the right decisions. The goals and purposes of listening sessions, learn, partner, and design. Learn, looking at the patterns about what is and isn't working. We really have to interrogate that. We have to analyze that and dig deep and say, what's working for our students, what isn't working for our students and our parents and our community, for our teachers and our staff. And then we need to partner, especially with our students, as we co-create this experience, this educational experience with them. And then we want to think about, what do they need? And then have them as part of the design. Oftentimes, that is what's left out. And this is just, some of this is cultural. We were all, you know, most of us grew up in households where adults told us, this is how it's going to be. It was not necessarily democratic, but as we understand, as we have evolved and grown and understand that our students, they are powerful, they are insightful, and they are really what's going to move us in the right direction by talking and shoulder, being shoulder partners with them. So designing a new system and ways of thinking with our students' voices at the center. So the next few slides, I have some student quotes from last school year. I went through and I read through lots and lots of data, and you will see a theme. And that's one thing about engaging in a listening sessions, finding those themes, and then, once we find those themes, then what is, what do we do, you know, as we move intentionally to make the right decisions based on what students are saying? This one is from a student. He said, "I had a bad experience in eighth grade at Maria Montessori program. Students were tasked to develop mural, a mural to leave behind at the school to be remembered after graduation. I wanted to do a Black Power-type mural. My teacher told me it was racist and it was discriminating to everyone else. I had an issue with that. My parents spoke to the principal, teacher, and the teacher compared it to white power and said it was racist." Another student remembers that experience and was also allowed to contribute her, was also wasn't allowed to contribute her idea to the mural. She wanted to do a black girl with an Afro, but she wasn't allowed. Instead, I wrote in Chinese, the word "love," which was allowed, and she said it triggered her. Another student, "Discipline is an issue. Teachers will discipline black kids way different from Caucasian kids, and teachers will call security to come when black kids are fighting. Caucasian kids will do the exact same thing, but they do not get the same treatment." And you'll notice, there's, there's a theme there. As we move to affinity groups. Affinity groups are based on social identity, shared characteristics, common interests, life experiences or goals, and/or acting together for a specific purpose. The board would be considered an affinity group, because you all are working on board governance. Your job is to work and be the voice of- governance, your job is to work and be the voice of your constituents, the, the people of RPS, of Rockford. We know that there are different affinity groups in and out of organizations, and so affinity groups, they serve many different purposes. Racial affinity groups are a group of people sharing a common race who gather with an intention of finding connection, support, empowerment, and inspiration. So coming together, I was with the diverse leaders. We had an affinity group last Tuesday. We had dinner and we talked about some of the challenges that they have. We talked about how I could support that, and it really was just a, a time to, to gather and, and chat, really. And many of them found comfort in that. And so that actually has been an extension of what has been going on, which started last year. I asked one of the principals, Taryn Turner, the principal of Ellis, to give a quote so that I can share with you all about the importance of, what, why she feels that being part of an affinity group is very important. And she wanted me to share this on her behalf. "Affinity groups are important to me because they not only confirm but affirm value, purpose, and focus. The time in my affinity group is for us to speak our truth with those who get it. We are walking alongside one another and on the same path with a common purpose. We learn and grow from one another. I feel seen and heard in my affinity group, which makes me feel whole." I thought it was a pretty powerful statement, and I wanted to read that on her behalf. So as we talk about this, we want to think about RPS 205, what our image is. This is an extension of Kathy Barrett. She did her presentation last week, I'm last, sorry, last month. The weeks start and the days start, just kind of moving together. And I want to make the, the connection with those that we are serving and their experience is going to speak to how they feel about who we are. So that speaks to what our brand identity is, the way we want people to perceive Rockford Public Schools. And then the reality of how people perceive Rockford Public Schools has a lot to do with the experiences that they have with our district. And that is extremely important as we think about communications, as we think about students and families as they are choosing to attend our schools. And it really, that we're in the service industry and we need to make sure that we're providing each and every one of our students with what they need. And that, we do that by listening to them and providing affinity groups and, and safe places for them to be their authentic selves. And that is my presentation. Thank you very much. And Chairman Siegel, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brunson.
You're welcome. There you are.
Thank you for the presentation and the questions that I hope will stoke some conversation. You don't really need me to read them to you, but I will start with number one. And why do you think affinity groups help retain top talent?
I'll speak on that.
Thank you.
So I think that it's important for affinity, affinity groups, excuse me, to help retain talent because we speak about, just in our board meetings, the need that we have all across the board, just for more staff, but especially more teachers. And we talk about how even just in that category with the teachers, how we need to diversify that, but that's not going to happen if those students are not seeing representation, if they're not seeing themselves in that profession, and they're not going to think that they'll be able to achieve any success in that role. So by doing these affinity groups, by them having that commonality of talking amongst other people, their peers, or other people that look like them that are encouraging them to go into this field, then they will naturally gravitate towards that more. So I think that that can really help with us not only meeting our needs in terms of staffing, but then it comes around full circle to meeting the needs that the students are saying or their families are saying that they, they need hear from the district.
Thank you. One of the ways I think affinity groups will be important in helping to retain top talent is it's, we, we have a pretty small percentage of, of, of staff that's not white. And I can imagine that people could feel a little reluctant to, you know, speak what's on their mind if they feel like they're just kind of off on an island. But knowing that they have people with whom they can connect will help them build their, their identity as, as being part of the school. So, and I think the more that identity is built, the more stable they're going to feel in that building. So I definitely see the benefit of developing affinity groups, particularly amongst our, our staff. It seems like it would be pretty easy to say that we're, you know, affinity groups being built among students would be, you know, would be a natural, but I'm not sure that that's actually the case either, but that's not really germane to this question. But would be interested in everybody's feedback. Ms. McCullough.
Actually, I think Principal Turner covered it in her comments when she talks about being able to speak her truth with others who get it. And being that few, the seen and heard in the group and feeling whole because of that because the same understanding is not there with others. So, you know, obviously, Principal Turner is talent that we would like to keep, and if that is a positive experience for her, it can only, in, in my mind, tangentially help other administrators and other talent in the district, whether it's, you know, at all ends of the spectrum. We're talking about administrators, we're talking about teachers, but I can see it, you know, those same truths being shared at other levels. You know, our paras, our, I don't know, do we think about our, our clerical, our YOBA folks and, and just at every end of the spectrum that we have in the district? So especially since there's, there's student interface bus drivers, if, so that would be my comment.
Thank you.
You know, I think I'm-
Go ahead.
I am thinking slightly different in that affinity groups help retain top talent when what they, what they're speaking land on the, the ones that can change the outcome. And I think it is, is very good, and I, I have to agree, I think Principal Turner summed it up. But just taking it a little further, and it may go onto the next question, is the, the result of speaking your truth? And, and that will, will that indeed help retain top talent when it lands on the ears that make the difference?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. I'll mosey on to question two. What is your opinion about the importance of listening sessions from students and other Ms. Muhammad.
I think that, like Dr. Brunson stated in her presentation, that it's obviously a very powerful tool, and it's important to allow students to feel empowered, to be able to speak up. So I'm very excited to see the progress that we've made, the attempts that we're making to do the listening sessions, but I think that we have to pair that with action because if we continue to just keep talk, talk, talking, then unfortunately, that will turn people off because then it will have a negative impact of sending the message that we're just trying to check off a box, which I don't think we're trying to do. But even just including other stakeholders, the community leaders, like you spoke about, that's very important too, that's very vital because there are so many people that are trying to stand in the gap and support RPS students, and even though they're not educators, they still have very vital experiences and input that can overall still help our students be successful. So game-changing is very powerful, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stanford.
I also am very excited about the student listening sessions. Our students really are our end users. They are our consumers, and who better to get feedback from on our systems and our operations and our policies and our day-to-day things that go on in the building than the end user of what we're, what we have to offer? So I think that it's really important that we are listening and that we are allowing them to be part of the planning going forward in the decision-making process.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson.
I think it's very vital that the listening sessions, because students, every student, voice matters. And I think it is important that we include every voice and, and make sure that we are not selecting the voices that we want to hear, right? So it may be, for an example, a kid who is constantly in trouble, but if he had a seat at the table, what would he say? And how would that help him as a student to perhaps turn that, his behavior around? And I think that that is, is something that, because there's always, there's an answer to every question. And, and, and the inclusion part of listening sessions is very important as well. So I, I wanna, I don't want to be, I don't want to just focus on the importance of listening sessions, but also those who are invited to the listening session. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins.
I guess Ms. Pearson's comments touch on the question that I had, so who are we inviting to the listening sessions?
That's actually a question I'm going to throw out to Dr. Brunson here in a moment. And if you want to take it now, feel free. Okay. As someone who sat in on the listening sessions last year, I found it remarkable that these students were very open with their ideas and their observations. And I really felt like thi- this was an area where we could get a ton of traction in figuring out how we can better meet students' needs, listen to the students. As I understood it, prior to last year, our efforts in serving students was all in conversation amongst adults. And while we were all kids once, we are all now adults and perhaps have shed some of the perspective that was particularly useful to what is happening right now. So I think the, the listening sessions are incredibly important. I do also hope that we expand the number of students who will be, who will be part of this conversation. I hope it reaches down into middle school and elementary school. And I, I hope that these conversations become a form of consistent messaging that we're able to build with all of our schools, all the way across our district, and get, kind of grow our sense of, of our schools instead of a school being my school or it's all about my kid. Dr. Brunson?
So yeah, so the aspiration is that we are building this as a part of our system. It's not something that it's a one-off, it's not something that we only do when we want particular feedback from one group, another group, but it's really an ongoing area where we're getting feedback on a regular basis, communication with our students. It is, what last year, the groups, it was very specific to the group. The groups that they were listening to were those students who were furthest from success, but also BIPOC students in particular, because that is also connected directly to the Equity Imperative. But this year, we're going to be, we're going to be doing that and more because the goal is that this becomes, we normalize this as just something that RPS does. It is our way, it's who we are, it's how we are. And that on a regular basis, and when we're making decisions, the students are at the table, and we have students here sitting at the table with us, and that this becomes how, just, just normalize, this is what we do. So yeah, so it's all about making sure that everyone's voice, like Ms. Pearson says, everyone's voice counts. It's a big shift in our thinking. It's a big shift in how we are seeing our leadership as students as leaders, and that we are in a circle as far as our leadership. So the no beginning and no ending, that everyone is equal.
Is it okay if I interject?
Please.
Dr. Brunson, could you talk about some specific examples of the types of listening groups you're going to be adding in? You've shared some specifics in some of our small group meetings with board members, but I would love it if you would talk a little bit about the work that Fanique was going to be doing, for example. Also, some of our, you, you mentioned a term during our two-on-one meeting today that I think would be helpful for the board to understand as well. So I'd love to just expand, if you could expand on some of the specific techniques we'll be using to accomplish the goal of having this be part of what we do as a district.
Which term was it?
I don't have my notes with me, but the, where you're listening in two-on-one with-
Oh, empathy interviews.
Yes.
Yeah, so we will, we are doing, we just embarking upon a, a pretty, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work, and it's going to, it's going to yield some really good results for us. So we're doing what is called a vertical corridor cohort, and that's going to be with Lane and Lincoln and East. I'm sorry, yes, and East. And so those, basically, it's a corridor. Those schools, they, the students go from Lane to Middle to, you know, and on to East. And so part of that, the conversation that we're going to be having is lots of tools, lots of work we're going to be doing with listening sessions with students. We're going to be doing group listening sessions, but we're also going to be doing two, called these small, smaller sessions called empathy interviews with students. And those are a lot more time-consuming because they are one-on-one or two-on-one with students. So there's groups, there's those small empathy interviews, and then we're going to be having listening sessions with parents, staff, at those three schools. It's going to be a journey throughout the school year, and so you all will hear a lot more about it. But this is one way for us to really see our, our system and be able to, how do we cascade this out? How do we make this something that we do? It's, it's going to be pretty robust, and looking forward to it. And Ms., Mr. Siegel, you were in the meeting today. If you want to speak on kind of your experience with it.
Yeah, I, I will have a couple of questions on it, but I would like to recognize Ms. McCullough first.
Could you just expand on empathy interviews? And I, I, I understand that we'll find out more as you work into it, but is that like you have to have an affinity group and out of that group is a subset that you would have an empathy interview because you had to have a shared experience? Or is, is, you know, what's the basis for empathy? Because the idea to me is that we've experienced the same thing to have, to really have empathy with each other, and doesn't, does it have to be within an affinity group? So-
No, those are actually separate. So empathy interviews are usually done with students and adults, and the reason why they're called empathy interviews- and adults. And the reason why they're called empathy interviews, because part of what you're trying to gain and gather in your discussion with the students is talking very deeply about their experiences. And those students are going to be selected because there will be students who are newcomers. They're gonna be students who are furthest from opportunity. And those will be students who have had lots of challenges. And so sometimes with empathy interviews, you have a select group of students that you want to really get a deep understanding about their particular experience. And so those are different from when you do listening sessions, because those usually are groups and kind of focus groups of students. But empathy interviews are, they usually last for about 30 minutes, if students can go that long. But the questions are really about their specific experience. And I can tell you, I've done them in the past. And what came out of that, the group of students that we did the empathy interviews with were young men who had, had many ODRs or write-ups, and students that have been suspended and things like that. And we really wanted to know, like, how are we not serving you? Very specific group, because it was like the same students that were seeming to have the same issues. And what came out of that was, at the bottom of it all, was relationships. And they wished that they were seen differently and treated differently, because they were having some struggles. And so these were students, and what comes out of that is now that is very laser-focused and more intentional supports and interventions for those particular students. So empathy interviews are usually for a subgroup of students that are, that need the most. And so as we are talking about targeted universalism and some of our other strategies, these would be a subgroup of students that we really need to know, how do we reach these students? And we speak to them individually and gather that information.
So I'd ask the question, when we have students who are in alternative environments because of expulsions or IAAs, will we be reaching beyond our brick and mortar in our district out to these students? Because they're still our students, and we're still supporting their...
Absolutely. So that, you must be reading my notes, but that was part of, one of the things as we are trying to dig a little deeper as to how have we served or not served those particular students. And so yes, empathy interviews, the point of those is to dig deeper into what their specific experience is like. And the hope is that that will, that will really give us some, some information, then that will help with our decision-making going forward.
Another experience that Dr. Brunson mentioned today in our small group meeting was the power of student shadowing, which is different from some of the interview techniques we've talked about, and following students through their daily experience. I also believe that members of our team will be building teams of students that will be able to collectively share student voice and represent a multitude of perspectives and experiences of their district. So those are two other things I know you shared with our Equity Systems team, as well as in our two-on-one meeting today.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so the student shadowing, we're very excited about that as well.
Ms. Pearson?
Yeah, so just for clarity and understanding, so the empathy interview will really help us get to the core of their issue. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, really deep into the root cause of things. Yes, yes.
I think that that's good, and it's very good, because it will help, will help us understand the why that I always talk about. And my mind goes back to a presentation that you had given about the pencil, and everything that this student had to go through to get to the place of learning. And as we get to the root cause, perhaps it will be a benefit to school administrators and how we use Title I funding, how we implement and execute equity. I think that there's so much connected to the empathy interview, and I am excited to hear and witness the outcome of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's just really important for us to remember that this is deeply human work, and we need to humanize the work as much as possible. Because I think we oftentimes make too many assumptions when we are in positions of authority to make decisions. And oftentimes, the reason why, like Morgan always says, your, the fit needs to fit function. If you are, you are assigning or prescribing some sort of intervention, and it's the wrong one, oftentimes that's the reason why it fails, because you're giving them something that they actually don't need or didn't ask for. So the reality is, we need to give our students what they need and what they ask for, and be very intentional about that.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. While I know that this is kind of a gut or a feeling conversation, as being on a board, I've got a couple of process questions. In terms of the vertical corridor, as you get feedback from the kids, will it be within their own schools, or will they be all together? Will kids from Lane be able to hear what kids from Lincoln and East are saying? Because it seems like there could be some cascading benefit to those students being able to hear these voices that are a bit ahead of them, and being able to maybe formulate their ideas. And there's more than one corridor that feeds to East. When would you be looking at having more than one corridor? In fact, and having all the corridors going to all the schools?
Yeah. Well, so many, only so many hours in a day, David. But as far as your first question, or your first suggestion, that's amazing. I will definitely, from our conversation earlier, definitely be adding that in. We're meeting with the principals on Monday to kind of map all of this out and go through all of the, kind of the details and the scheduling and all of the getting into the weeds. And that can definitely be something that's added. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question, Dr. Brunson. When does that process start again?
Actually, we're starting some of it this month. We're starting with some listening sessions with students this month.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just have one more quick question. So what is the determining factor of selecting a corridor?
Well, this particular one, and I know Dr. Jerry can speak to, or any other cabinet members can speak to it, it is, if you look at the diversity of this particular corridor, it really speaks to the diversity of our entire system. And so it will be very representative of the experiences of most of our students. And so it's really important that that was chosen. And also, to be frank, in my mind, when I was thinking of this as a means to gathering more information as we are really analyzing our system, it was really about these three administrators who were also being very open and flexible and vulnerable and willing, willing to do this, too. So that was secondarily, but a secondary decision, if you will. But yes, the hope is that once this, we can see how we can do this in a systematic way. And the goal is, as students matriculate from elementary on through high school, they get used to these conversations, they get used to like, this is what it feels like to go to schools where they are seen and heard and valued, and that these families are now the families that would then go to Lincoln, and the families that would then go to East. And so this is really about helping them be more engaged and show up differently as partners. So that's really, all of that is part of the hope and purpose and our aspiration in digging into this work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brunson.
I'll do it on the next one.
Very good. We do have one more question to run through. We can try and tackle it in a couple of minutes. I think we've largely indicated how we think this information's gonna be helpful or be useful to us. But if there are any last comments people would like to offer, now is the time. Ms. McCollough?
So we talk about return on investment. We talk about metrics. We talk, how are we going to know, how are we going to monitor the success of having this sort of approach with the listening groups and everything that you've just provided us?
So at the same time that we're engaging in this very intentional and structured listening for some, we also just launched our Panorama survey to give us a measure of student sense of belonging district-wide, grades three through 12. That data will be coming forward in, very soon in the coming days to schools. And that will give us something that we can monitor two times per year. So that will give us sort of our long-term impact on some of these metrics, and also provide all schools with actionable data. So at the same time, while we're doing very targeted work, we also have some new information that will give us district-wide measures to help us sort of, to your point, identify improvement at scale.
Sorry. That improvement will be self-reported by students, and will it be disaggregated?
It is. It is very intentionally and multidimensionally disaggregated, and it is reported by students themselves in grades three through 12.
And when is the, when do those two surveys occur?
The first survey just closed last Friday, so it will annually be October and April.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm being told time is up. So thank you, everybody, for the discussion, and we will move on. Ms. McCollough?
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Ms. Stanford, you're going to lead us on the performance and monitoring committee portion of the meeting tonight.
So it's time for our annual audit results. Tonight, Jamie Murray, Executive Director of Finance, and Nick Cavalier of Baker Tilly will present the findings. Their report will focus on two audits: CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Illinois State Board of Education Annual Financial Report. I'll turn it over to Ms. Murray. Nope.
Good evening. As June mentioned, I'm Jamie Murray, Executive Director of Finance. And I'm gonna go over the fiscal year '21 financial year-end results. The audit falls under the Goal Five of the Strategic Plan, and that is to demonstrate effective and efficient business operations and ensure excellent stewardship of public money. And we feel this year's audit report does just that. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or our audit, has two financial statements inside of it. The government-wide financial statements and the fund financial statements. The government-wide are a full accrual-based set of financial statements, very similar to a corporation in that it includes capital assets, debt, and pension liabilities. The fund financial statements are on the modified accrual basis, and that is what the board is used to seeing on a monthly basis. First, I'm gonna talk about the government-wide financial statements. On this slide, this is the revenue by source for all of the funds on a government-wide basis. So, oops, sorry. So on this, we're showing where did all of our revenue come from? And 40% of it came from operating grants, which would be state and federal grants. Both at 27% are the evidence-based funding and the property taxes, followed by CPPRT, or Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax, at 5%, and charges for services at 1%. Some highlights for the government-wide revenue comparing FY '20 to FY '21. Our evidence-based funding remained flat at $155.5 million. We had a slight increase of .7 million or a half a percent for property taxes. Operating grants increased $5.7 million or 2.5%. And CPPRT increased $6.5 million or 27%. The largest revenue variances were in CPPRT and operating grants. The CPPRT increased due to an increased allocation from the state. We were not expecting as much as we got when the budget was established. The operating grants are recorded when they're earned. And so FY '20, we had less expenditures related to the pandemic, so the revenue in FY '20 was a little less than FY '21. Now we'll look at the government-wide expenses by function. So where did we spend our money in this pie chart? We spent 68% on instruction, which, that relates to teachers and direct classroom expenses. We spent 8% on public support services. That includes things like attendance, social work, speech pathology, audiology, guidance services, health services, those kinds of services. We spent 10% on general administration, 7% on maintenance and operations, 3% on transportation, and 4% on other. And on a government-wide basis for these expenditures, if you compare FY '20 to FY '21, instruction expenses increased $12.8 million or 2.5%, or sorry, 3.5%. Pupil support services increased $2 million or 4.7%. General administration decreased $4.6 million or 7.4%. Maintenance and operations increased $5.9 million or 17.9%. That increased due to advanced spending and some non-capitalized expenditures related to the pandemic. Transportation decreased $2.6 million or 12.9%, and that decreased due to a reduction in purchase services related to the pandemic. Other expenses increased .9 or 5.2%. Here we take a look at our general admin, a five-year trend. Our general admin at the end of 2021 is sitting at 10%. 12% is a typical nonprofit benchmark. So we're under that benchmark and efficient at 10%. Next, we'll look at the second set of statements that are in your CAFR. These are the fund financial statements. And as I said earlier, these are the statements that the board receives each month. In this slide, we take a look at all of the individual funds, as you can see across the bottom. And we have the budget in black, the projected, which is based on a five-year historical average in red, and the actual results in blue. And as you can see, for the most part, for all of the funds, revenue stayed pretty constant, except for in the capital projects fund. That increase was due to the unexpected CPPRT that was received from the state that we are gonna use to invest in our facilities. We have the same sort of graph with all of the funds at the bottom, with the expenditures, the black being in the budget, red being the projected, and blue being the actual results. The educational fund, the operations and maintenance, and the transportation all had less expenses than was budgeted and projected. For the, for the educational funds, the decrease was related to the salaries and benefits were lower than the budget due to vacancies. And for the transportation and operations and maintenance funds, those expenses were slightly lower due to the pandemic. Next, we'll look at the operating funds. Each month, the board receives an aggregate statement in their board packet that includes the financial results for the operating funds. The operating funds include the educational funds, the operations and maintenance, and the transportation. Here we look at the revenues by source and compare it for FY '20 to FY '21. And you can see that the revenue was pretty consistent, with a little bit of an increase in the local. And that was due to how we allocated the CPPRT in 2021 versus 2020. In 2021, we allocated more in the capital projects fund, or the, sorry, operations and maintenance fund than we did in FY '20. maintenance fund than we did in FY '20. And here we look at the operating fund expenditures, comparing FY '20 to FY '21, and it was very, very consistent with a slight increase in the non-capitalized equipment, and that was related to purchases of some smart boards, Chromebooks, and iPads for students in classroom. Here we look at the operating funds change and fund balance, comparing the FY '21 budget to the FY '21 actual results. We had budgeted a deficit of $9.3 million and had an actual surplus of $12.6 million. This surplus was largely attributed to a decrease in transportation costs and salaries and benefits due to vacancies and less health insurance expense allocated to the individual funds. Per board policy, the operating fund balance must be at least 25% of expenditures. So as you can see on this slide, FY '21 expenditures were $442.5 million. Take that times the 25% to get to the $110,624,870. Divide that by the revised fund balance of $183.5 million, and we end the year at a 41% fund balance percent of expenditures. So we are meeting our 25% policy. The district is also responsible for preparing an annual financial report each year for ISBE. ISBE designates a financial profile score for each district based on various metrics. We expect a 3.8 recognition for 2021. This puts the district in the recognition category for the past seven, for the seventh consecutive year. In summary, this is the fourth year of audit with no material weaknesses, and that is very, very important because that means that our internal controls are working. So in the event that something were to occur, our, our controls would, would detect and timely prevent it. It's also important because the financials that you're getting on a monthly basis are reliable for making decisions. Thank you for your time, and I will turn it over to Nick Cavalier from Baker Tilly.
Good evening, everyone. All right. So my name is Nick Cavalier. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly. This is my third year working with the district and performing the financial statement audit and the single audit for the district. For the most part, my slides are going to go over anticipated audit results. We're still in the final stages of conducting our internal review procedures over the audit work papers. We anticipate all the information that I'm going to share with you tonight to not change. We do believe that we will be finalizing our reports within the next week or two by mid-November. One of the things that will be a little bit postponed this year, and it has a lot to do with the fact that the pandemic has had some effects on the rules that are used for us as auditors to audit your federal grants. It's called the Compliance Supplement that's released by the Office of Management and Budget. That document, it was released a little bit later, and we need a little bit more time to review that information, to make sure that we had all the appropriate procedures ready to go to perform the audit. We are actually in the process of coordinating our field work to perform the single audit this month and be working with the administration to do so. One of the things that's important to understand is that we worked with the State Board of Education to let them know about these challenges, and they have changed their acceptance of their annual financial report and the single audit, and to break those two filings separately and essentially utilize the timelines that are established by the federal government for their due dates of reviewing the single audits. So, single audits have all been actually extended by the federal government. If you have a 630-year end, by an additional six months past the standard March filing date. So the, the delay in performing the single audit outside of the, the financial statement audit is not going to cause any ramifications for the district. So the scope of the financial statement audit that we perform for the district includes many different documents. We perform an audit over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Illinois State Board of Education's Annual Financial Report document. There's a schedule of expenditures for federal awards that has to be audited. That is, is how you utilize your, your federal dollars. A consolidated year-end financial report, which is required to be audited by the Grant Accountability and Transparency Unit in the state of Illinois. We conduct a single audit of your major federal programs. The district receives funding from the Illinois Community College Board, and they require an audit over financial statements and a compliance audit to be performed. And then, in accordance with conducting an audit with governmental auditing standards, we render a report over internal control, over financial reporting, and other compliance matters. So several different documents that we will issue in, in the time for the audit. So the anticipated results for all of these different documents is that we will be rendering what you call an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive from the external auditor that your financial statements present fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. A clean audit opinion. It's essentially what you want to hear when the external auditor comes out to talk to you about their audit results. We anticipate performing that type of an opinion over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Annual Financial Report with the State Board, the Schedule of Expenditures for Federal Awards, and the Consolidated Year-end Financial Report as well. As it relates to the Illinois Community College Board audit, we anticipate rendering an unmodified audit opinion on those financial statements in addition to our compliance testing. We did not identify any matters that were reportable, and we believe we have performed that audit effectively and are rendering an unmodified audit opinion as well. When you're performing an audit over a governmental entity, the auditor has an additional responsibility to gain an understanding of your internal control framework in place for the preparation of the financial statements themselves. So when we come out to perform the audit, we do a series of walkthroughs over the district's internal control structure. We test those controls. We apply analytical procedures. We look at tests of details. We perform a lot of different, I guess, audit procedures, so to speak. And along the way, if we identify any risks in your internal controls or matters in the preparation of those financial statements, we'll report those to the governing body and to management. Those types of reportable matters have two classifications, one being the highest quality material weakness, and then a step down called a significant deficiency. And we do not anticipate issuing either a material weakness or a significant deficiency for the fiscal year '21 audit. At the same time, when we're performing the audit, if we have identified any noncompliance with laws or regulations, we have a responsibility to communicate those as well, and we do not have any instances in that regard. Professional auditing standards require us to communicate if we had any disagreements with management or difficulties in performing our audits, and we did not have any matters arise. Something to just, you know, keep in mind for the administration and, and for the governing body is that every year, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board generally releases some type of new standard that changes the reporting framework, how different amounts are measured and disclosed in the financial statements. Starting in fiscal year '22, the district and every other school district in the state, well, nationally for that matter, it's, it's a national standard, will have some requirements regarding how leases are measured and disclosed in the financial statements. And, you know, this is something that's been impacting the, the private sector in addition to the, the government sector. You know, we just would like to let you know that this is something that's coming down the pipeline, and that now is a good time to get an inventory of your contracts and vet them against this particular standard so that you're prepared for those changes to next year's financial statements. So to essentially conclude, you know, we anticipate rendering our opinions by mid-November and, and issuing, you know, several of the financial statement documents. The single audit will be underway and will be issued at a later date, but nowhere near the allowable timeframe, which has essentially been extended to September 30th of 2022, because I don't think that anybody wants to wait that long to get that work out of the way. So, you know, thank you for your time this evening, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions that the board may have at this time.
Mr. Segal.
When you speak of making sure that all of our lease contracts are in compliance, are you talking about things even like the Chromebooks and iPads that we hand out to students? Or are they large lease items?
Yeah. So what I would say is to review all of your, your agreements that have a structured repayment plan over time against this new standard. So it can be things like, you know, the leases that you have in effect for technology. It could be leases that you have in place for, for classroom space or building space. It can also be leases that the district may hold as the lessor with other entities, where you're, you know, essentially leasing out your, your space or other things of that matter. What we're finding is that in, in school districts, these may not be as prevalent, but again, you don't know until you kind of do a full inventory. And the, the terminology around leases has all changed. You know, we used to have them segregated into two broad categories: a capital lease and an operating lease, and the disclosures and the measurements in the financial statements were determined based on some criteria. You can pretty much take all that criteria and, and throw it out the window, and everything is new now. So it will potentially result in a restatement for the value of those contracts at the inception date of the standard, and, and then that can have some impacts on additional disclosures in the financial statements, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I just speak to the leases? We've been gathering those for, I mean, we've been doing this on an ongoing basis, so we need to reevaluate our leases. I mean, we do work papers on this all the time, so our process for us gathering that is to try to catch it when it goes to board, because sometimes it's hard to catch. But then after that, we do a search on board docs, so we have a, a team member of mine go through and make sure that we have them all. So this, we've been doing this for years and so, and in our contracts. So we have a good handle on that. We just have to go back and look at it against this new standard.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I guess I'd just like to say congratulations to the accounting department. I know I've been through these 30 years plus, and external audits can be very tedious and time-consuming, and, and good job.
Thank you. I really want to thank my team. They've done an amazing job. I mean, fourth year of not having any material weakness. It's hard to explain to people how to measure this. It's not the number of journal entries, it's whether or not they're material, because that's what makes a difference in our decision-making. But it is a ton of work. When you talk about compliance, that means that not one grant expenditure report was submitted late. If, if it is submitted late, we have to do a lot more work, which we don't want anything to be late, but it's a lot. And right now, you can see with all the grants coming through, there's a lot of that. So thank you for the recognition, but I want to recognize my team because they're the ones behind the scenes doing all the work. So thank you.
A related question on the leases and lessor. I mean, we don't lease to Page Park anymore. We don't do Stiles. We don't, but are, are charter schools considered leases? Those are not. When they're using our buildings. So do, do we charge anybody for any of our facilities anymore then? ILC, maybe?
I would have to look at that. I don't think so, Mike. I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we're charging for those, so. Okay. No, it's done now. Jamie, Mrs. Murray was just stating.
Well, Ombudsman was at Stiles, but we have the other Ombudsman at ILC, right? Is that still on Kishawaki? Did I miss that? We moved that. Where did we move it to?
Um, Mr. Phillips is coming up. I can't remember.
So, so the other Ombudsman program that was at the site on Kishawaki has now moved to Patriots Gateway last year?
That's right.
Yeah.
Who paid off their loans.
We have no leases at this time.
Okay.
There's nobody leasing any of our space, and...
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for having me here this evening. Have a good night now.
Would you like me to read through the consent items? Yeah, is there anything that anyone wants to talk about that's on the consent agenda for the next two meetings? Okay, that's it.
Where are we with the resolution? Is that on a different category? Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I guess that concludes our portion.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford. So, Mr. Rawlins, Planning and Development Committee portion of the meeting, you're floor-shir.
So the first item on our agenda is the resolution to approve the 2021 tax levies. I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Sather, Executive Director of Budget, for her presentation.
Oh, green means on, red means off. Sorry. Okay. So again, thank you for having me tonight. We are required to file our annual tax levy with the county before the last Tuesday in December. So tonight, I will be presenting our 2021 tax levy recommendation for our tax levy, upcoming tax levy year. So a bit of background on our assumptions for this levy year. We have estimated EAV increase of 5.8%, $6 million of new property values, and we do not have the allowed CPI incorporated into this tax levy assumption, which is 1.4%. Here's a look at our property taxes over the years, our levies over the years. The last two rows there, 2021 is the last yellow row, which is what we are going to be discussing tonight. This shows our estimated EAV at $2.5 billion, CPI of 1.4%, new property of $6.5 million, at an estimated tax rate of $6.2325, resulting in a tax levy of $156.6 million. We also have our 2022 levy assumed here, just because we are making another assumption for our next upcoming levy year. Here's a look at our EAV over the years with, we could see a 33.48% increase from 2017 on and equalized assessed value for properties. The last two columns here, again, are estimates, the 2021 tax levy estimate of $2.5 billion EAV, which is an increase of 5.8% over our 2020 actual EAV. So EAV affects the tax rate. As EAV increases, our tax rate declines, so we will see that in the next couple of slides here as well. And this is a look at our Consumer Price Index for the calendar year 2021. This will be effective with our 2022 tax levy, but we just wanted to, with the crazy year we're having with pandemic and inflation, we wanted just to give a little slide in here to show how CPI is trending at this point through this calendar year, and we're assuming then a 5% CPI index for December of 2021. Here's a look at our, at tax, school tax, excuse me, tax rates for 2020 for school districts within the Boone and Winnebago County region. This is shown in ascending order with the lowest tax rate on the left and the largest tax rate for school districts on the right. And we can see we're 6.5857, which is kind of a nice visual to see that we're not, you know, the highest taxing school district. So our 2021 tax levy options, we have a couple options here. We can keep our tax levy flat, a flat dollar amount, which we'll show, us, show you on the next slide. Or we can include new property. We can include the allowable CPI and new property values, or any other amount that we need, as long as we're not over the CPI or 5%, whichever is less. So here's our 2021 scenarios here. The first column shows a flat tax levy, so the dollar amount of $142 million there, that's assuming no... that's assuming no, no increase in CPI, no increase, no taxable new property included. With the tax rate of 6.21, our recommended, recommendation to bring forward is to increase the levy by the amount that's allowed for new property, which is, will produce an estimated 6.2325 tax rate and have additional revenue to the district of about $368,000. And then the far right does show kind of what's allowed, what the school district is allowed, is allowed to take regarding tax levy, which is increasing the levy by the 1.4% CPI, as well as taxing on new property values. So if we did that, we would have an additional revenues of about 2.4 million and an estimated rate of 6.31. So this is looking at our tax rate from 2015 through the current 2020 year is an actual rate, 2021. The last three columns there are the estimates that we discussed. And then the 2022 levy, which is, you know, another year out, but we are still putting some assumptions regarding that, those EAV and tax rates, where we're estimating those to be coming in at. But again, tax rate is continuously falling due to most like, most, but because of our EAV has been increasing year-over-year. So we're just bringing forward this tonight. So approving and recommendation that we approve the 2021 tax levy with our new property included in the calculation. Like that.
Mr. Segal?
Discussion.
Thank you. On Slide 10, you show the 2021 levy at 6.2178, which corresponds to the flat levy suggestion on Slide 9. But you're making the recommendation of taking new property, which would put us at 6.2325. I guess either way, it's 6.2. That's... How many additional dollars just for taking new property, I mean, real dollars for the district?
That's $367,000.
Okay.
So basically, it takes that estimated 5.6698 rate times the 6.4 million of new property, and that's how we're, that's how it gets to, calculates to that additional revenue.
Got it. It seems like, I mean, I would love to stick that in my wallet, but as far as the district goes, it doesn't seem like a super meaningful dollar amount. What is the, uh, the benefit to the district? Or what's the, the driving reason for taking the new property?
Well, when we did this last year, we did designate those additional dollars to capital needs and, um, and reserve that in a fund balance, so that could only be spent in that. The other thing is really when we're, when we're foregoing on taxing, increasing our levy by our CPI or the new property, we're really like holding our tax base flat. And year-over-year, you know, we can't go over a 5% increase or the CPI value, whichever is less. So we're really just, by holding it flat, we're really kind of holding us to that initial, you know, last year's levy amount as our initial calculation for the current year. So increasing the tax base is what, you know, would offer additional revenue in the instance where we, you know, other funding streams don't come through as budgeted. For instance, state funding or, you know, CBPRT is some of our other major funding sources. So this is just, um, just something that we can think about as far as, you know, having additional dollars available for the district if we're ever in need.
So this is like a small hedge against the influences of, you know, this inflation, which seems to be a thing, correct?
Right, so as we were looking at, like, the 2021 calendar year inflation rate right now, you know, for our 2022 levy, we could take, if this, if this holds flat at 5%, we could take a 5% increase on the levy.
Okay, that seems heart attack inducing.
Sure.
Okay, I'll be eager to hear some other questions on this.
Ms. Stanford?
Didn't we, correct me if I'm not remembering this right, but didn't we add the new property because we thought we were going to have a $9 million deficit last year? And we ended up not having that?
I'm not sure if, I'm not sure exactly of the timing of that, but we did, I mean, that really, it wasn't significant enough to have made that difference. I, I don't remember which order it came into, but then we did designate it. You know, we have so much facilities condition, you know, remember the facilities condition assessment? They were supposed to be spending 20 million. Actually, they said $30 million a year, but Mr. Phillips and I have looked at that. And so it's $20 million is what we think. That's what we should be spending on our buildings every single year. And we are, you know, where is that money coming from? So this year, yes, we did a $9 million deficit, because who could predict what was going to happen? And then all of a sudden, spending, you know, came on fire. And then we went and, you know, and actually, there was a law change, too, which actually made that CBPRT increase. So, you know, no one really could predict that. So anyways, we ended up there. We also did some active cutting to, because the board had asked us, do you not land at $9 million? So we end up with a surplus. We end up allocating more to capital just to try to get a funding stream. We do not, we are now getting a funding stream in place. We have $10 million in CBPRT that is funding that, $20 million that we really need. And then whatever surplus we have, we're going to keep, you know, moving that over if that happens. You know, we're trying not to have vacancies, but we're having vacancies. We have incentives that have come forward. I don't think that that's going to go away as far as building it into someone's salary. Salaries are going to increase. There's a lot of expenses that are coming as we're seeing, you know, today. So this adds to the base. And then if we forego it, then it will not, we will miss out on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mohammed?
So the 20 million that you just referenced, you said that's an average per year of what we, what we need to spend on our buildings?
Yes, that's correct.
So is that as far as renovations go, or just upkeep?
Just upkeep, just upkeep, yeah. We had an outside party do a facilities condition assessment in preparation for our facilities master plan to see what we really should be investing in and what, what we needed. So we had someone come in, gosh, it's been like a year and a half now, and they came in and presented that report. And so then I did a multi-year spending plan showing all of the pieces that went together. I also included in that plan an advanced refunding opportunity, which we're going to talk about a little bit later tonight. But yes, that's what we should be spending outside of our additions and replacements, that type of thing.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll go next. So I agree with, or remember it the way Ms. Stanford did, that for whatever reason, the presentation last year was, oh, we're going to have a $9 million deficit in the budget. And then we talked about the levy, and I think that affected the board's decision to take new property last year. I want to go back to Slide 7, because there's actually something I want to highlight here, which is good news. I've been watching this bar graph for a lot of years now, like 10 years. And when I started, we were, we were never number one, but we were probably number two. And then I think we were number three. So it's good to see us at number five. And it's really good to see us behind two of the Hananeega school districts. Having said that, I don't know how to get through that, get that through to people. You're all ambassadors for the school district, so I hope that you will continue to push out this message. I just had this knock-down, drag-out argument with somebody within the past year who blamed our high taxes in Rockford on the school district. It's not true. It's because of the other, they have to pay our taxes, and then they have to pay, on top of that, the city of Rockford, the Rockford Airport Authority, and the Park District are the big three, which people in the surrounding districts don't have to pay. But, you know, once upon a time, I'd write a letter, editorial for the newspaper about this, but, I mean, nobody reads that anymore, so there's no point to it. But I do wish that we would find ways to get this out, this information out, so that people, whoever is paying attention, will understand that the high taxes we pay in Rockford are not because of the Rockford School District. They're attributable to the other taxing bodies. I also do want to point out those little asterisks. So two of those school districts that are to the left of us, Belvidere and North Boone, they benefit from a county-wide facility sales tax that was passed in Boone County, which they can then use on their facilities. They don't have to use operating funds. So having said all that, though, I just, we are the largest taxing body in Rockford, and we're sort of the leaders. And we have led the way, and other districts taxing bodies in Rockford have followed us and have held the line on the levy. I don't think that this is enough money to really material, make a difference to the district. I understand it doesn't make a difference, much of a difference to the tax rate, but I think that the story that we've held the line on the tax rate and kept it flat is a lot easier to convey to people than we sort of held the line on the tax levy, but took new property. So I've said this last time. I'm going to say it again tonight. I really think we should just keep the levy flat, which we did for years. And I don't think it's worth taking the new property. I'm not sure where that leaves us, because we'll have to vote on this at the next board meeting, right? So I guess we just all express our views, and we'll just, I think you better have two different resolutions prepared and have them ready to go at the next board meeting. Did anybody else have any? It really is kind of annoying seeing these ghost lights. Oh, wait, Mrs.?
You can hear me. I'm just going to say that I would like to just keep it flat, flat, also. I think that's something we've aspired to. I can understand the need. But I don't think we have a viable reasoning with the money that we've, has been brought in, you know, federally and on the pandemic money and the things that we're able to do with capital expenses. I do see the deferred maintenance piece of that. I truly understand that. But I have, from the time I began on this board, have, have really vowed to try to hold that levy. And so I'm going to ask, you know, we'll see what other board members feel, but I'm going to stand with Mr. Rollins on that.
I just wanted to point out one thing. Just, I mean, I know most of you know, but we have new board members. So this money that's pouring in is restricted for specific purposes. So we get air conditioning, we have to put a roof on. So that might be a reimbursable amount. This is my, this is what I think is going to happen. Let's say we have to put a new unit on the roof. You, you have to pay for probably, let's say it takes 25% of that roof. You're going to have to pay for 75% because 25%, if that's what's claimable, you know, we have to come up with the other amount. So just to put that in perspective, I mean, we have, yes, we're having all this money coming in, but it's for a specific purpose. We have to meet the learning loss piece, too. So just, so everyone understands that's, that's, I mean, it's restricted money for a specific use, so.
Well, I just want to clarify. I don't, I didn't talk about any ESAR funds at all, or ESAR ARP.
No.
So we've had significant increases in state funding because of evidence-based funding. And the rationale when evidence-based funding was passed, and some of us were on the board when that was passed, it really was to try to equalize among richer and poorer school districts around the state. There was a recognition that poorer school districts, like Rockford, were heavily dependent on real estate taxes. And it was having a circular effect where high real estate taxes were then depressing economic development and actually driving people out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so evidence-based funding, part of that formula is actually based on your high tax rate. And so the purpose, you know, one of the stated purposes was to try to equalize that and allow us to lower our tax rate. So I think that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, I was just speaking to Mrs. McCulloughs when she had said this money coming in. So I was assuming it was the ARP-ESAR that she was referring to, or the ESAR funds, but not, not to your comment, Mr. Rollins.
Michelle, can you elaborate on the piece that you mentioned about learning loss and the fund?
This is, this is really to the ARP-ESAR. I mean, the community also, you know, when, it's hard to communicate out to the, I don't think, if you read in the paper that RPS gets 200 and some million dollars, you're going to, you're not going to understand, you know, what's going on, like, why, you know, what are you, what are you doing with this money? So we've put this out here, right, the ARP-ESAR. We have to spend 20% of that money on, to address learning loss. If we don't meet that 20%, you know, we won't be able to realize the rest of it. So we have to keep that percentage in balance as we spend. So 20% of a lot of money is a lot of money, so. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a short period of time. So we're working hard on that, Mrs. Duttman's. I'll work on the learning loss piece with the team. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's challenging to say at least it's a short period of time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, actually, I did want to say, I mean, now that I have heard everyone, almost everyone's input on, on this, I guess I would also be inclined towards keeping it flat. And for the amount, or the number of dollars that are being generated by the new property, I mean, it, it just seems like the district could extract more value by, by holding that flat rather than taking that, you know, that few hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know if this ends up affecting what sort of proposal comes to the next meeting with the number of people suggesting that it be held flat. But I would definitely be in favor of that.
Okay, is that horse dead now? Okay. Let's move on to bond refunding. So the, yeah, exciting stuff. Oh, this is exciting. So we have an opportunity to save some money. Think of this as in terms of refinancing your house. We have bonds that have been issued, a number of different kinds of bonds, enough different kinds of bonds that'll make your head spin. And some of those bonds, there is an opportunity to potentially refinance them through some very convoluted refinancing schemes, but that might actually save us a little bit of money. And we have here to talk about it Ann Noble from Stiefel. Stiefel is the public finance, I don't know, what do you call yourselves?
Bond underwriters.
Oh, bond underwriters, okay. They are the bond underwriters that have assisted the district, at least the whole time I've been on the board, in all of our, our bond financing. So I'm just going to turn this over to Ms. Noble, and she can explain it to you way better than I can.
Awesome. I have paper copies. Is anybody a paper person? Or you can just use what you can? Well, thanks for having me here tonight. It's awesome to see the results of your audit and honestly, the results of all the, the great developments with your EAV over time. When we started the, the bond financing program that I'll highlight for you here shortly, your EAV, as you guys know better than I, basically just hit rock bottom right after that and, and really, really declined. that and, and really, really declined. So to see the, the growth coming back is, is truly a positive development that I know helps you all in many ways, so. This is why I wanted to give you paper copies, because I know it's lots of small numbers. So if anybody wants one, just raise your hand. So the district has four sets of outstanding bonds. Your bonds, unlike a mortgage, are not eligible to be refinanced any old time. They have what we call call protection, meaning a certain period of time over which you're not allowed to prepay them or refinance them. And that's simply due to investors saying, I'll give you X interest rate if you give me X years of call protection, where I know my investment is fixed and that you're not going to take it away from me. And that market standard is around a 10-year timeframe, 10 years of non-callable status, meaning you can't refinance your bonds. Sometimes it's nine, sometimes it's eight, but it averages somewhere in that range. So you have these four sets of bonds outstanding. The oldest of which we issued back in 2013 by voter approval. And those bonds are eligible to be called, if you look a few lines up from the bottom, you'll see call date is listed there. I can't even read that table. There we go. Next call is the row I'm talking about. It's four lines up from the bottom. And you'll see the call date on those bonds is February 1 of 2023. And then as you go across on the, on the table, the other bonds are callable in 2024 and 2025. So the next most eligible for refinancing is the 2013 bond issue. If we refinance 90 days in advance of that date, we can, we can go ahead and do it as what we call a current refinancing, okay? If we're doing it more in advance of that, under federal tax law, it's called an advanced refunding. And then there are some additional restrictions that come in that make it less advantageous for you. It saves you less money the further we are from the call date on the bonds. So the ones I'm going to talk to you about tonight are just the 2013s. I'll show you the 15s just to show it to you, but it's really not worth looking at right now, okay? And then you'll still have the 16s to consider at some other point in the future when we get closer to the call date. So tonight, we're just going to talk about the 13s, but that is the majority of your bonds. You can see the amount of bonds you have outstanding. The 13s were the big, the big enchilada, right? So you have about $70 million worth of those bonds that can be prepaid or refinanced. They're not all eligible to be refinanced, but most of them are, okay? Any questions on that page? I know there's a lot of information there. All right, I'm going to skip the market overview, interest rate discussion, and we'll come back to it after we look at the refinancing opportunity. So the 2013 bonds, as I said, are eligible to be called in February of 2023. But you can do them in advance of that if we follow some certain options available under federal tax law. I am not going to walk you through the, the specifics of that, but this page summarizes the numbers for you. So we can do what we call a forward refunding on the 2013s, and we can basically do that now. And the way that works is you sell bonds, in this scenario, I assumed in January, so three months from now. We sell bonds in January and investors agree to buy them from you, but they're not going to take delivery of them, they're not going to actually buy them until November of 2022, a whole year from now, okay? So basically nine, 10 months from the time we sell them, they're going to take delivery of them then. So they're ordering them from you in January, they're actually buying them from you in November. By doing that, they will lock in interest rates with you in January because we're worried about interest rates going up, which we'll talk about when we go back to those market update slides. In exchange for them lacking in that interest rate for you, they're going to charge you a little bit, okay? Because they're taking market risk. They're agreeing to an interest rate today without knowing for sure what the market's going to be in November, okay? So it's not as attractive if we could just sell the bonds in January. But the only way we can just sell the bonds outright in January is if we do them with a taxable interest rate, which is more expensive than a tax-exempt interest rate. And since you're a school district, you are eligible for tax-exempt borrowing. So we want to use tax-exempt bonds if we can. But if we refinance as early as this coming January, we got to use taxable interest rates. So we're going to use this forward scenario where they lock us in, but you don't actually sell your bonds until the end of the year, okay? And that is better mathematically than using the taxable interest rates. We can do either. And in the scenario I ran through with, with the committee, we talked about both. Trying to save you guys too much brain damage. So here, we're just going to look at the tax exempt forward because this gives you the best financial outcome. This assumes that you sell bonds in January, that we deliver them in November, and that you lock in your savings in January, but you don't actually achieve the savings until November. So you can see on that page, what you come up with is we're refinancing about $67 million worth of bonds. And the savings, if you look at those blue rows, the cumulative savings is what I would call cash flow savings. It's about $7.2 million. And the interest rate highlighted right above that is about 2.5%. That is better than the 4% outstanding on your bonds, hence the savings, okay? Average annual savings, $654,000. That's savings to your taxpayers. It's not, not cash savings to the district's financials because you levy for these bonds. Part of that levy that you just looked at was bond payments, okay? You don't get to adjust that part of your levy, it just is what it is. But if we reduce the bond payments, it reduces the levy unless you borrow to fill up the hole, which we can talk about in a minute. But if we just assume you only refinance, these savings are about $650,000 a year. The savings as a percent of what you're refinancing are about 9%. And the, the reason I point that out to you is because the industry standard is if you want to do a bond refinancing, you want it to save you at least 3% of the amount you're refinancing. So you're triple that. So it's definitely worth considering. We've been talking to Michelle and her group about this for almost two years because there's been savings, but not enough that we thought it was appropriate to come and talk to you, okay? Because you were far enough away from the call date that you were leaving money on the table. As you get closer to that February 2023 date, the savings improves, improves, improves. So the line we're trying to walk now is, do we wait until that February 23 date? And if we did that, and we did it at today's interest rates, if we waited a year from now and we did this refunding then, and the interest rates were the same as they are today, and that's the big caveat, a year from now, interest rates being the same as they are today, you would get the savings in that green column on the right-hand side, okay? So the savings would go from 7.2 million to 11 million. They go up a lot. The caveat or the question is, do we think interest rates will hold for us? And what do we think the risk is worth? So that's my final row there, the break even, is 67 basis points, basically 2/3 of a percent. If interest rates go up by more than 0.67%, you will wish you had done the refunding now. If interest rates go up less than 0.67%, you will be happy you waited, okay? If any one of us knew for sure what was going to happen, we'd all be millionaires. So that gets you back to these two slides. And I think you can really just focus on this slide here. I mean, generally speaking, you all are aware of this. We are seeing the market starting to worry more and more about inflation and that perhaps it is not transitory. And the Fed is making comments about the fact that they are going to start raising short-term rates and that they're going to stop the easing that they've been doing on the economy and, and try to manage the inflation from getting out of control. So what we're seeing that you see graphically here is that economists are forecasting and agreeing more and more and more than they were over the past several months, that rates are trending up. And you can see in that far top right graph, the, that's a consensus scale from economists all across the market. So if we look at the 10-year, right, sort of in the middle of the graph, because your bonds aren't super long, they're between that, between the 10 and the 30-year. But right now, we're at a 156 and they're predicting going to a 198. The 30-year at a 194, predicted to go to a 254. This is not apples to apples for you guys because these are treasury rates, you're a municipal bond borrower, but it gives you a sense of what economists think is going to happen in the market. It's kind of right on the edge of that break even where, where we said you are, right? So it, this is truly the board's decision. I don't, nobody will throw stones one way or the other on this decision. You can see from this graph, this shows you historical interest rates. The bottom graph on the lower left is interest rates for the last 20 years. So you can see we are very close to the bottom. It is a very, even though rates have gone up by about 35 basis points in the last month, we're up about 0.35%, we're still very close to the low, okay? So it is a very attractive time to borrow. But you are leaving some money on the table because you are still a year away from your call date. So do you take the bird in the hand or do you wait it out? We've been waiting it out. We've had calls with Michelle, I don't know, every six months, we just do an update, we check in. And we just keep saying, oh, let's just keep waiting, let's get closer to the call date. But this most recent conversation, it was, well, savings are up to 9% and the market's starting to move away from us. So maybe it's time to come talk to the board, okay? These savings, as I said, are 100% going to get credited back to the taxpayers unless you can, we did talk about this on the last call, you could monetize the savings, basically, and basically add some new borrowing in and takes, take the $7 million of savings and use them for projects. And then the tax rate would stay exactly the same as it is on your bonds, okay? We just, we would just monetize those savings and you guys would put them straight back into your facilities. So that choice is available to you as well. With that, I will open it up to questions, unless Michelle or Tim, if you guys had anything I didn't cover for Dr. Jarrett.
Just, just one thing, we really want to look at the net present value savings because that's after the, after the fees, everything, correct?
Right.
So that's $6 million and $9 million, so that line can consider.
Yeah, I mean, the reason those numbers are highly relevant is because it's a present value number. The, the $7 million and the $11 million are savings over the life of the bonds and your bonds are outstanding all the way out to 2033. So you have 12 years of cash flow and the present value savings just literally gives it to you in today's dollars because a dollar today is not worth the same as a dollar 12 years from now. So that's the point of the net present value analysis is we're just accounting for the time value of money and we're equating a dollar today to a dollar 12 years from now mathematically. So that is the best number to focus on, as Michelle said, and that's why the percent savings number focuses it that way. Instead of focusing on cash savings, we really try to focus on percent of savings because this is a big bond issue. So the savings are a big dollar amount. But it could be a tiny bond issue. If, if it saves 9%, it's still 9%, okay? So either way, we try to focus, focus on it that way.
So hopefully everybody understands what the two issues that they're really asking the board to consider. On the tax exempt current column where we have, they show the most savings, the interest rate of 1.822%, it's my understanding, that's if we, if we actually sold bonds today, we'd get the 1.822%. So the question is, these bonds, but in this column, these bonds wouldn't be sold until January of 2023 with an assumed closing date of February 2023. And the question is, what do we think interest rates are going to do between now and January of 2023? If they, if they go up more than 0.67 percentage points, basis points above that 1.822, then we might as well have just done it now. On the other hand, if they stay where they are and they don't really go up that much, we'll be better off having waited until January 2023. And then the second question that they're asking is, if we do either one of these, well, if it's, if we're waiting until January 2023, that's going to be, you know, that, that's down the road. But if we're going to do it now, if the consensus is to go ahead and do it now, with these like $6 million savings, would we actually just take that $6 million savings and reduce our, our debt service levy, which would be relief to the taxpayers? Or do we dedicate that $6 million to the facilities for the next facilities plan and just take that $6 million as new borrowing?
And you can see the impact to the tax rate on that next slide, on slide, is that slide nine? The far green column shows you the impact. So for the first four years, it's less than a penny because in those four years, you're just making interest payments on the bonds that are callable. But then, starting in year five, we're actually refinancing principal, so you get notable savings starting in year five that's around four cents a year. And again, that would come straight off the tax rolls or we would just level it out and fill it back up again with, with the new borrowing that you could use for projects.
One other thing that I, during the committee, or my committee preparation, I talked to Anne about, I did confirm with her, we're not extending the maturity date on the bonds if we do this. We'll pay them on the same schedule. This isn't what Chicago became infamous for, the scoop and toss. So we're not, we're not proposing doing that. So it does not extend the debt, the, the schedule of debt payments either.
That is correct. We literally just took your mortgage and shaved off some interest expense and this is what you get. You don't have to decide on the, how, if you, if you decide to move forward, you don't have to decide on how you want to use your savings, if you want to just put the relief into the tax rate or if you want to use the savings for projects. That's not critical because this process will take two to three months and you all could chew on that in the interim. But the, you know, do you want to proceed or do you want to wait? Obviously, that's, that's time sensitive. We can wait a month, we can wait three months, we can do anything you want. But obviously, we are just trying to be sensitive to what the market's doing.
Ms. Pearson, did you have a question?
I do. So maybe I'm putting all of the, the money in one boat, I'm not sure, but it just makes sense to me to decrease debt. And if we have money that we can use for facilities now, let's use our own money.
Yeah, I understand. And the, the tax rate decrease that's going on, as I said, you don't really get a lot of impact for the first four years. In year five, you do have a decrease. If five years from now, you all are saying, we need 100 million to do X, well, that four cents will still be there. So you could monetize it then. So it, it is, this is not a do today or never do conversation. It's not.
Well, let's start with a question of whether we think we want to do.
Right.
Or whether we want to wait, because that's really, that's the gatekeep.
That's the crux of it. It really is, I agree.
And, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence about this, you know, I don't like gambling, so I don't, I don't like gambling with my own money. But I, my sense is that interest rates are rising, whether they're going to rise more than 67 basis points during this period, I don't know.
I don't know. I, I don't like losing. And it looks like, just the thought and the look of losing bothers me.
Sure.
Because of course, we don't know what's going to come over the, the course of time.
Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, I'm definitely with you on the not being much of a gambler. In fact, I'm very, very much a bird in the hand sort of person. And when you said that, that kind of told me where to go. And when you said that, that kind of told me where to go. But on the other hand, $3 million is a meaningful amount of money, and it's kind of hard to knowingly, well in advance, just say, I'm going to just forego that. But given that this is not my money, it makes the decision a whole lot easier, and I would just, I'd be inclined to be thrilled with a $6 million bonus instead of a $9 million.
Ms. McCullough?
So for clarification, how far ahead of time can you pre-sell? Is that the terminology?
Yeah, if we're doing this forward scenario, like I've outlined here, that's pretty much a 12-month limit. Once we go beyond 12 months, the forward buyers pretty much won't lock in. So you're basically in that range. Anytime now we want to do it, we can still do the forward. If we're doing it with taxable interest rates, you can do it as far in advance as you want. And you can, I skipped over this, but this is the 2015 refunding to show you, and this is just a taxable borrowing scenario. So here, you can see your savings on this. Good, sorry, I can't read too far away. So this one, the net present value savings is a million and a half, but if we waited all the way until the call date in 2024, it's 6.3 million. So you can see how much more expensive the taxable interest rates are, and we're waiting a whole nother year because this one's not callable until 2024. So there's two things at play here. Taxable interest rates are worse than the forward, and it's another year of time on the call date. So the break even on this one is 150 basis points. That is a break even that we would not tell you to move forward on. That's too big of a number to take the gamble today. But the forward, you could do anytime. Anytime you want to pull the trigger, you could at this point because you're basically within a year by the time we get the bond sold.
And so the gamble is that the interest rates will rise more than the 67 by January of?
2023.
2023.
Right.
Yeah. I'm a gambler. Just saying.
All right. Ms. Stanford?
How much did you say the interest rates have gone up in the last month?
35 basis points.
So half of the, yeah.
Yeah.
67 is what we get. So that makes me nervous.
The market's pretty spooked right now, and the market's not very happy about some of the economic indicators that it's seeing. And the Fed is actually now making noise about actually raising rates. So those two things have definitely caused a spike up in rates.
What, are you nervous which way? That it's going to go up much more than the 67 in a year's time?
Okay, we've got, David wants the bird in the hand. Jude would wait.
No, oh, gosh. I came off wrong. I'm sorry. I'm not a gambler.
Oh, okay. Jude wants the bird in the hand.
Oh, gosh.
Jude wants the bird in the hand.
Yeah, I guess I do.
Anybody else want the bird in the hand?
Well, everybody's looking at me, so I guess I'll go now. You mentioned, Ms. Ann, that normally we've waited in the past, correct?
Well, we've been waiting. We've been looking at this for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Because this is a large enough bond issue that it has been showing savings for some time. But it's, the break even, each time we've looked at this with Michelle, has been over 100 basis points until just recently. And that's a threshold at which I will typically tell clients, at over 100 basis points, let's just keep waiting and see how much closer to the call date we can get. Once we get down below 75 basis points, I think it's worth starting to take a look. And so now we're there.
Okay. I was just asking for clarification on that because I was going to just mention, if we've waited, then what's the issue with continuing to do that? And I mean, I see the predictions of how the rate may rise. So I mean, I understand.
Right.
Why we're having this conversation right now, but.
Yeah.
When it comes to money and massive amounts, I'm not quick to say that we should gamble. So I would like to still wait. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, so right, just to maybe clarify that, I'm not sure. But right now, if we do it, we save $6 million. If we wait, we might miss out on that $6 million. That's what we're really talking about now. So we're, you know, just like, I mean, we talked about refinancing a house. So when interest rates tanked, when I couldn't earn interest any longer, really, I mean, Fed rate cut completely. So the reasonable thing for me to do is like, look to the other side. Well, we're not making, you know, any money, so maybe we can save some money by refinancing our debt. So we started having that conversation again, like, close to two years ago now. So really, it's just like if you were to refinance your house, you're going to save, we would save $6 million if we did it for January 2022. But if we wait, we might miss out on that.
Okay, so I had it backwards.
Yeah, so I thought you might have, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood.
All right, gotcha. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So we're voting on this next meeting?
Well, the next meeting, if we're going to do it, I think we, is it going to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
No, we have it in December right now. We have it coming forward in December.
Okay, so we'd vote on it in December? Yes, it takes some time to think about it, and we do really, as an administrative team, agree with the recommendation of what we're calling the bird in the hand here, for what that's worth. This is ultimately the board's decision, but we are listening to what we're hearing from the experts in the field about the risk of those 67 basis points and then those savings being lost, essentially. We don't lose money, but we would lose an opportunity, is how I look at it. And so it won't cost us money in the sense that we would have to write a check, but it would be money that we didn't save on the tax rate, or money that we don't put towards facilities, which would then cost us money because we'd have to spend another area. And that's the second decision. So we do feel that, at this point, grabbing the $6 million in savings is the best bet.
Yeah, it's kind of like lacking your mortgage. You know you need a mortgage. Do you lack today, or are you going to wait two weeks and lack? It's that. It's that analysis.
I should also mention, so there is a transaction cost of doing this. For some odd reason, Steeple doesn't work for free. And so I did ask the question. That's built into that net present value savings, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why it's below the cumulative savings. That's correct, right?
That is correct, yeah. Yeah, we've netted out an estimate of all the fees, so bond rating fees, lawyer fees, bank fees, Steeple fees. They're netted out at a 2% assumed rate, which this will probably be more like 1%, but I haven't bid it out and gotten quotes for you. But it is netted out. So this would be actual savings to the district.
Okay, well, that gives.
Of course, subject to the change that.
Everyone's something to think about for December.
Yep. All right, great. I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Well, thanks for coming. All right, preview of consent items. The following item will be presented on the consent agenda for the November 9, 2021 board meeting. RFQ 22-12, Civil Engineering Services. This request for qualifications is for additional qualified engineering firms to perform project work as funding is approved to proceed. So I'll just sort of, the high-level overview of this is that we're going to be doing all this work because of the gobs of money that we're getting from the federal government. And the school code, the way we're allowed to select engineering firms or professional firms based on their qualifications, have a list of approved firms and have them ready to go. The administration is, I think we might be down to one firm. Is that right? Is Mr. Phillips still around here somewhere? Can you just yell? Are we down to one firm?
We're down to one.
We're down to one firm. So he would like to get more people onto the list before we start doing all these projects so we don't just have one firm because it's probably going to be too much work for one firm, and it's never a good idea to just use one firm anyway. So are there any questions or discussion on this consent item?
And what firm do we have?
Yeah, you're going to have to come up here because I don't know that one.
Ms. Pearson, can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
I said, which firm do we have?
Fairgram is the firm we're currently using.
I'm sorry.
Fairgram.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There are no consent items for the November 16, 2021 board meeting. That completes the report for the Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Time for the Governance Committee, and the first item on that is a Board Policy Update, 5.270 on Personnel. I'm going to have Ms. Goldsmith speak to that.
Okay. The proposed changes to this policy include additions of three of our bargaining units to make the list complete, and then language regarding required approval for employees to work overtime.
Any questions, Ms. Pearson?
So we never had a policy in regards to overtime?
We did. Generally, staff are to request prior approval for working overtime, but this just memorializes it. So the practice has always been that people are not to work without their supervisor's approval, but this memorializes it.
So, um, I'll come back.
Any other questions on the policy? If not, we'll move on to B, which is the IASB resolutions. So every year, our governing committee for IASB brings forward a list of resolutions. The, actually, it's school districts. I mean, if there was anything we wanted to put a resolution for from a state perspective, we can. And the IASB, at the convention, we vote to adopt or not adopt, and then they move on. Just because we say we agree with something doesn't necessarily mean the state legislature or the, or the school board, or, I'm sorry, or the state will agree with what we say, but it's just what our platform is. I think there were 22 resolutions this time around. We actually heard from either constituents or other districts about three of those, and so those three, as I suggested to board members, were the three that I put on the agenda. We do have two board members attending the meeting, and they would take forward our vote on those three because those are the only three I put on the agenda to vote on. And I didn't hear from any other board members about adding any others, so let's just pop through the, we'll go through those three. I'd love to say pop through them, but they're somewhat wordy. The first one, number one, is the one called the Pre-Service Teacher Education and Licensor in Literacy. And the resolution is as follows. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall advocate for legislation mandating the Illinois State Board of Education require pre-service teachers seeking licensure in the areas listed, complete at least one undergraduate-level literacy education course solely dedicated to scientifically proven methods of reading instruction before being granted licensure in the following areas. Individuals must receive a passing score on the most recently published Foundations of Reading exam using cut scores in the formal standard setting or process. Licensor areas that should meet these requirements are early childhood education, early childhood special education, elementary education, English Language Arts, middle grades Language Arts, reading specialist, reading teacher, special education, speech-language pathologist, and English Language Learner teachers. The district that put forth this said that for far too long, despite there being clear scientifically supported evidence on how to teach our youngest students to read coursework successfully, teacher education programs in Illinois have failed to provide pre-service teachers the appropriate coursework. These methods are clearly identified by longstanding scientific research and include, but are not limited to phonemic awareness, phonetics, spelling, decoding, and comprehension. In a 2020 study conducted by the National Council on Teacher Quality, 43% of university teacher education programs in Illinois earned a D or an F grade for how they prepared students to teach scientifically proven methods for reading. The governing board for the IASB has recommended that this be adopted, and so if anybody has any conversation about this or discussion, be happy to entertain that now. And again, the three of these, we will vote on as a board at the next Tuesday's meeting.
So my question is, I can understand the importance of having incoming teachers meet this requirement. However, am I missing something? Like, how are we approaching this for teachers that are already educators? Like, is there any extra requirements that they have to meet to make sure that they're like on the same level, like, as the teachers that are coming in? So that way, where all the teachers are doing their part to improve the reading scores?
Great question, but I think, but this just applies to incoming teachers, the way it's written.
Okay.
Ms. Pearson?
I just need clarity, and I apologize. I thought I understood you requesting feedback on the three. I missed the part in adding additional ones to the agenda, but I don't see any on the agenda. I don't even see these three on the agenda. Am I overlooking that? Under the Governance Committee?
They're just listed on your executive summary. There's not an attachment.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Two weeks ago, was it two weeks ago or last week? I don't even remember.
Yes, it was last week.
I gave everybody the full paper packet to look through to see if there were any additional ones that they might want to add because these were the only three that were on the agenda. I did ask about, how was this written, Ms. From, about writing it so that it just said "Subject: IASB Resolutions"? So it doesn't, so we didn't limit it? I just put those three on the agenda? I did, is there something you wanted to add? I guess is the question out of the other 22.
Yes, the school board member compensation.
So I was told that if we wrote it as a generalized IASB resolution, we would be able to have a conversation about the other? Is that, is that correct, Ms. Goldsmith?
Yes, just because the ones detailed here are limited to the three, now that you're having this open discussion and if you were to include it on the agenda for next meeting, indicating that others would be considered, then I think it would be fine to be actionable at the next meeting.
Okay. So what number is that?
Number three.
Well, you know what? I'll have you present that. Let me do the three that are on here, and then we'll have that one, a conversation about that one as well.
Okay, sure.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Pardon?
She said you're welcome.
Oh, okay. So, seeing no, oh, just kidding.
So do we get to further discuss this when we go to the conference? Or because it's already written up, is it just going to be, it can only be voted on the way that it's written?
It's the way that it's written unless we, as a board, make a recommendation to go forward.
Well, I'm just asking that because I asked the question about what are we doing to make sure that the current teachers are, you know, performing at the same level as the incoming? So I know you don't know the answer, but I'm just trying to figure out, how can I get the answer to that?
One thing I just want to be clear about with all of these, though, these are advisory recommendations that the legislature, so this is not like if this passes the vote that it becomes a law. It just means that our lawmakers take that into consideration. So I just want to be clear. So as we're doing this.
Right, and I said that. All it is, is to say where the Illinois School Board Association stands on the item and sends their recommendations to the legislature. But I don't see any reason, because they vote, when they vote on these, there is an opportunity for discussion. I don't see why there could not be any reason to. I don't see why there could not be any reason to ask the question, whoever is representing us, if that's a question we have. I think that's valid.
I think what you've done in the past is the board has given specific authorization to the board's representative on how to vote on anything that we'd be voting on.
Yeah. But the vote wouldn't change, but the question could be submitted. Could it not? Why, I don't see why not.
According to the information in the packet, that is something that the delegate would have to ask permission for when they get there.
Right, and be recognized to do so.
Right, correct.
And I think what we've typically done here is instead, as we've gone through, we've only discussed items that we were going to deviate from the IASB recommendation, correct? So we did, in the past, we've only gone through ones where, as the board saw these, that the board...
Disagreed with the recommendation.
Disagreed with what the recommendation was going to be.
Thank you for that clarification.
Because otherwise, it's just a matter of going with the flow at the meeting and kind of going along with the recommendation. So typically, there's probably going to be 40 or 50 items that our board representatives have to review. And typically, it's easiest to the default be to agree with what is written, and then the board gives specific authorization if you're going to disagree with that. In the past, the one that was probably the most controversial was the one about weapons.
Right. Because this has come up before. So to answer your question, I'm sure there's somebody we can ask from IASB. If you, if that question was considered, we'll be happy to follow that forward. But if we vote on this next week and everybody agrees with it, then it doesn't have to be pulled out for conversation.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just trying to ask about...
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's a legitimate question, but I don't know that, I know, this, the way it reads, just targets pre-teachers going forward, right? There's no, Ms. Detman might have some information about requirements for teachers that are currently in place and how this goes beyond that.
So just, I can speak to our local context here. What we do with our training in the science of reading and our required training for Reading Horizons, all teachers K1 and 2 who teach Reading Horizons, they get exactly that kind of training in phonics, symphonic awareness, and the science of reading. And then we offer Level Up trainings for people beyond the initial, plus two additional coaching sessions throughout the year for every teacher. So we have pretty robust professional learning opportunities for our current teachers in the teaching of reading.
And that often happens on a local level, doesn't it? I was, I hate to say the word appalled, but I was appalled when I looked at the curriculum for elementary teachers on what they have to take for reading preparation. It's...
It's slim. And I would say it is similar to the teaching of writing as well.
There are two things to consider with anything like this, though. The last time the state upped licensure standards, we went from 60,000 teaching candidates a year being produced to 12,000, and it disproportionately meant less African-American and Latino teaching candidates. So I do want to be clear that while it always sounds great to raise standards, you're competing against states that may not have those standards, and you may run the risk. So locally, again, and that's why these resolutions are so challenging. I mean, at the end of the day, the legislature will still be the next step that goes through these things, but these often are really complicated issues that come forth, where it seems like, oh, why wouldn't we want higher reading standards for teachers? Makes total sense, but there are often unintended consequences that come with these extra interventions or these extra requirements, excuse me.
Good questions. I'm going to move to number two, which is the Student Safety and Protection Plan. I'm going to read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans, which allow voluntary district employees in any capacity, the ability to carry a concealed firearm on district property, provided the employee has a valid Illinois firearm owner's identification card, holds a certified Illinois concealed carried license, and has completed all additional trainings and certifications set forth by respective school board, one of which must include yearly certified active shooter training. Only district employees who fulfill all requirements listed and receive superintendent and board approval would be eligible as an active and armed part of the Student Safety and Protection Plan. The district that submitted this, and I think you all heard last week, Mr. Connor spoke to that, was trying to emphasize that it allows local school districts the option to have the voluntary armed staff in their buildings. The most misunderstood part of the topic is that this resolution is about local control. The resolution, if adopted, would not compel or require any school district or school board to develop or implement an armed staff plan. Some communities are perfectly comfortable with having their teachers and school staff trained and armed so they can protect the people in their buildings. Other communities are adamantly opposed to the idea. The districts in our state should be allowed to determine what is best for them, rather than those in Springfield, who do not know or understand communities outside their own. And this was put forward by a small district downstate covering 378 square miles. I guess it's not a small district. But, and their concerns are the fact that there's a seven to eight minute, they're seven to eight minutes away from their junior high for any police presence. The elementary is 20 minutes away from the sheriff's department. They work with the county. They've tried to hire a student resource office or school resource officers unsuccessfully, and so they want to approach safety in their buildings from another direction. And I believe, where did I put it? Yes, the Resolutions Committee recommended to adopt. So if we, as a board, don't agree with the recommendation to adopt, that is when we would speak up. So is there any conversation on this one?
You know, I understand that, oh, will you? I understand that the piece of local control, but I guess I'm thinking ahead, and just to give my input on a possible hypothetical. Say, our local decided, you know, that the power was given to the local, and we supported firearms. I think that that would be a double standard to our students. And I don't ever want to be in a situation where a staff member was fearful of their life for whatever reason, and one of our students got shot, or their phone was mistaken for a gun, or someone felt like their life was in threat, so being threatened. So I think I'm looking at the bigger picture and the possibilities. If it was put in the locals' hand and they support it, this, that piece of it concerns me. And so I wouldn't support the Student Safety Plan. And I think that this was Quad Cities, and I think that there were some other issues that perhaps, it just seemed like there's other issues going on in that area. And I don't feel that we should, based on that particular scenario, be in a position to say yes to such a resolution.
Okay. Anybody else? David?
So there's already a process by which they could have school resource officers in their building, which they admit to. But the discussion is, the, it sounded like Mercer, was it county? Was reluctant to provide the personnel unless someone else is going to pay for it entirely, which I completely understand. But that doesn't erase the fact that they do have a process by which they can get a school resource officer, if they could get their intergovernmental agreement game working.
David, I think they hired one and the person quit within a month, so...
Well, okay. So, but that doesn't change the fact that there's still a process by which they can hire a school resource officer. What it sounds like, if you look at another one of these resolutions that's proposed in there about locking guns that are in the home, which, you know, I'm in agreement that IASB should not be worrying about that. But it kind of feels like Mercer County is just trying to find a way to have a free school resource officer. And if we're going to depend upon a community that probably is, or could very well likely be in line with the statistics that were in this other resolution, where half the homes show a really gross neglect for gun safety, is this the kind of community where we want to have a free school resource officer? I think working with the state, you know, to provide the funding at whatever necessary level that is, for communities like Mercer County to be able to provide the adequate school resource officer is the way to go. It's already an approved process for the state. They just have to figure out how to communicate this so that they can make this intergovernmental agreement work.
If I could add, hi, I'm Kwaya. I'm from Guilford, so I'm a student myself. And I wanted to talk about, like, what I thought. Is that allowed for me to talk?
Uh, Kwaya, we will have to have a designated time for student representatives to talk. But I do appreciate you wanting to share your voice. We'll talk more, and we can maybe work that into your comments on the 16th.
Okay. Thank you.
Except for will already have been voted on the 16th, so...
Well, that would be at the pleasure of the board president, of course. I was just going on what we agreed upon, but yeah.
Yeah, we did agree that you guys wouldn't, but we'll be voting on this at the next meeting, and your comments will be the meeting after that. So I would, if it's okay with the rest of the board, I would entertain your... Go ahead.
To be clear, I would, too.
I would, too, actually.
You kind of threw me out there, Dr. Jarrett. It's a struggle.
My apologies. I just tried to stay with him.
No, no, that is agreed upon. So if you pull your mic a little closer because of the mask, that it helps.
Yeah. Can you hear me better? Okay. So to me, like, even with a drinking policy, because like recently, students aren't allowed to bring outside drinks into school, at least in high school for us. So like, they say you can't enter the building with like a Starbucks cup, right? So when students see teachers bringing Starbucks cups, they're like, hey, why can't we? So I think when you open that door, you can't stop what floods in. So they see teachers running around with guns, they think, oh, maybe I can bring my gun to school, you know? And on top of that, recently, I was in a psychology class, and they said, like, exposure, even exposure to a gun, like, most students probably haven't seen a gun, you know what I'm saying? So being exposed to that at school, they say that, like, doubles your chances of being involved in, like, crime and stuff like that. I don't know the exact statistics, but I know it's very, a high statistic. Like, once a student is exposed to a gun, their chances of violence increase dramatically. So I would just keep that in mind when you guys vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Yes, Kwaya, I love it. I get so inspired when I hear from youth that speak up about things that they're passionate about, so good job on taking the initiative to speak on that. I was just gonna put my two cents out there that I strongly disagree, just because I think that there's valid points that are brought up about the double standard that it represents, but I think also just it's opening a can of worms, because in the environments in certain districts where there's a disconnect between the staff and the students, and there's staff that are stepping in that are not properly de-escalating, that this can definitely, like, lead to something horrible and detrimental. So again, that's just my two cents. I strongly disagree.
Thank you, guys, for hearing me.
Of course. And thank you for taking the initiative to speak up. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, so that will come up for a vote at next week's meeting, and we'll see where we land. Number three, I'll take these in order since number three was the question asked. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that provides for fair and reasonable compensation for school board members. This compensation shall help relieve the financial burden incurred by Board of Education members so that they can attend school board meetings, board committee meetings, held in compliance with the Illinois Opens Meetings Act, and for events regarding school district staff and other official school board business not already compensated. This one was submitted by Champagne, and their rationale was that serving on a Board of Education requires board members to miss work, facilitate childcare, and other family care and travel. These needs can be very costly, which creates inequitable barriers to democratic service. The committee, and they also said that the purpose of the resolution is to remove barriers to serving on school boards so that representation of school board members across the state more accurately reflects the demographic makeup of each school district's student population. The Resolutions Committee voted not to adopt, saying that the committee members ultimately expressed the money would be better spent on students. All right. So any conversation? And this has been raised before. I forget when. It's failed pretty much every time it was a resolution, but Ms. Pearson?
Well, you know, of course, the equitable part got my attention. But if we look at better spending for our students, if we look at our overall budget, like, for example, the percentage that we have for salaries, question how is money really being allocated where it relates to our students? And I get the whole bargaining piece that I think can be a little confusing, but when we look overall at salaries, and then, and when you sit in a board meeting and you hear the same issue come up that is unresolved from 10 years ago, it make you wonder, should we look at merit increases and raises and better allocate those funds to our students? Because if we're 10 years behind and haven't made any progress in certain areas, that's questionable to the public. And so, and you would have more community engagement if that was, you know, a possibility. So I wanted to bring notice to that, because my mind goes back to 2016, when they were writing candidates, no one stepped up, and we don't know what those barriers were outside of not being informed, but, or, and connected. So I think that I wanted to just acknowledge that piece and have some discussion about that. And I'm really interested in what board, unless we only reviewed the three that we were going to vote on, what your input is on that.
I'm sorry, what number was this one again? Was it number five?
Three.
Number three.
Three. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, and so this topic has come up over the years. I remember being in an editorial board meeting at the Regis or Star when it came up. I'll just share my view. I think school boards in states where they're not paid are the purest form of democracy that's left in America. Everybody's a volunteer. I've never, and I've served with a lot of board members now, I've never served with a board member who I thought was on the school board for any reason other than that they wanted to help out the kids and community. And my concern is, when you start paying people, there's a different motive for people to run for office then. And I would prefer that we all just stay volunteers. I mean, one of the best email responses I ever made to somebody was they emailed me and said, you have to remember who's paying you? Who's paying your salary? I had fun responding to that email. Nobody's paying my salary, because I'm a volunteer.
Yeah, and if I may add, Tim, I'm sorry, Jude.
No, you're good. No, you're good.
That came across my mind as well, because I, you know, as I combed through the area, just in our city alone, it, you know, I have had questions about that myself, but again, what got my attention was individuals who would have a genuine and pure motive in being a part of the school board, but have those barriers. So, I get both sides of that. Thank you.
And I would say I like the nonpartisan piece of, of being not paid. I feel like it, it helps that you're not representing any specific political. And I think that we attempt, while it does run into our workdays to a certain extent, there are school boards that meet, like, in the afternoon, and, which really encumbers parents who have children or jobs that, you know, that they're at nine to five. And ours are typically, you know, 5:00, 5:30, hopefully, end of day, maybe a little bit cut into the schedule, but, but we do try to, to work outside this, and that's just from a local perspective, that we're able to do that. I, I know that other communities aren't, so... Any other conversation on number three? We'll add that to the list to vote on. And then the last one was number nine, and we did have a speaker, I'm sure you'll remember, as well as some additional emails about this topic. "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for local school district control of content and curriculum for health and sex education courses offered by their districts." And their rationale is that although SB 0818, which is currently tells us, states that a school district may, rather than shall, use the new curriculum, this district has concerns that the state legislature can change this to shall at any time without local district input. And their feeling was that their community knew what was best for their children and their families, and so long as it was a nationally recognized program, that they should be allowed to make the choice. And this was submitted by, oh, Mercer County. So, yeah. Anybody have any conversation on that one?
You know, Senate Bill 0818 is a pretty significant bill, and there's so much embedded in that, in that bill, and I think that we should take caution in how, and, and really, perhaps if we get an opportunity to look at the bill, and I, I understand the details of the bill, it will help us make a more informed vote on, because there's layers of information embedded in that bill that, that could affect in the long term.
So, the district has taken a look at the bill, and Ms. Detman's department actually, I believe, put out a FAQ to parents about the curriculum mandates, and I'm sure she'd be happy to share that with you, but in, in brief, and I won't try to explain it all, the district is in compliance with the current sex education laws that are out there. With regard to year 2022, 2023, the district will continue to monitor the ISBE resources for materials for possible inclusion for grades K through 5. But presently, we are in compliance with all of the state mandates. And I'm sure Ms. Detman would be happy to forward that, that document that I'm referring to, to you. It was a summary document.
It was included in a recent board update, but if you'd like it again, I'm certain, I'm certainly happy to pass it along.
Thank you. I have that document. Thank you.
Seeing no other... Oh, Ms. Goldsmith.
I'd like to offer comment to Ms. Mohammed on the question about the resolutions. In the, the document, I believe you have it in hard copy, and it was emailed to you, the Resolution Committee document, there's a procedure at about page seven that spells out the timeline for consideration of proposed resolutions and amendments. So, based on what I saw there, quickly reviewing, at the meeting where you will, where someone from the district will serve as a delegate, there would be opportunity to possibly be recognized and speak on behalf of the board, but not to amend the resolution. There's a separate process and procedure that requires them to submit the proposed changes out to everyone, you know, X number of days ahead of that assembly meeting.
Thank you. So, we get one delegate, or is, we're not both voting on it?
Just one of you two.
And how is that selected?
You guys can choose between you if we need to do rock, scissors, paper, or straw. If you're both attending and you're both willing to do so, I, I would ask that the two of you just make a, a decision between the two of you who would be more interested in it, and it might be a time-sensitive piece, too. I think this is on, it's on Saturday morning, so you can take a look at that.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if that was a board decision or not, so thanks for the clarity.
No, I, I'd really just like the two of you to, to decide between you, because...
That's fine.
I didn't want to say somebody has to do it, and then they didn't want to either, so it was kind of...
How are we registered?
Ms. Pearson and Ms. Mohammed, that is regi, I can register you online through the IASB website, so, similar to how you were registered for the conference itself. So, fingers crossed, I'll try to get you both in, but only one can vote, okay?
But, yeah, I under, so, I under, I understand that, oh, you're referring to the General Assembly itself?
Right, right. You have to be registered before you, you can't just walk. You have to be registered ahead of time.
Okay, so, of course, this is a new experience for the both of us, right? So, and I recall showing interest early on, and I kept looking for information regarding this. So, the General Assembly is separate, and I'm, I'm familiar with general assemblies and how they run. You can have more, only one person can vote, but you can have more present there, if it's not too late. I don't know what their protocol is for that, and it would be, it also would be nice if we were at the facility. Speaking of budget and expenses, I, when I showed interest in it, I prepared my budget with the understanding that I would be at the hotel where the convention is being held. So, that's some, that's important, especially given the, the nature of time that I showed interest.
And, and Ms. Mohammed, at the time of registration, the hotel already was sold out, and now, Ms. Pearson, I'm sorry. So, the, the hotel had been sold out. There were two hotels at the time of registration open. One was the Intercontinental, and the other one was the Marriott. And, and looking at it just yesterday, it showed, the Hyatt showed that it is open. So, as I said earlier, I will call and change those reservations, if possible.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Those elevators are heck in the hotel where, where it occurs. But I do appreciate you representing us, and if both of you can attend and just vote as one, that'd be super. So, she'll let you know if that works. So, I think it's a great request, and I appreciate it.
Okay, Laura, what timeframe can we expect to know an answer? And then we can, Ms. Mohammed and I can figure that out, or you need to know which one of us are going to be the delegate before, correct?
Oh, yeah. They just want to know if you can do both or not.
I, I'll talk to you. Are you asking when will I tell you what's, when, could you repeat your question, please?
Sure. Are you waiting for Mrs. Mohammed and I to decide which one of us are going to be the delegate?
No, no. I will register both of you.
Okay, thank you.
I will attempt to register both of you.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'll get back in an expedient manner if she's unable to do so, and then you can have that conversation, otherwise you don't need to do that ahead of time, so... Great.
Very well, thank you.
Anything else about those resolutions? Thank you, everybody. Consent items are the same for November 9th and 16th. They're the usual meeting minute, contract purchase orders, possible workers' compensation settlement, and freedom of information logs. So, we'll also have closed session redacted minutes on the 16th, from January 21 through June 21, so be prepared to peruse those when we get into closed session. I think that's where we do it, right? Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Do we have any outstanding questions to take away? We don't have any speakers tonight, so I don't have to read the last piece. Seeing no further comments or agenda recommendations, I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.[1791.32][1791.32]